The survey, this is really the best way to prioritize and to be able to know what work we should do over the course of the next school year, reviewing the policies that are really policy section one, two, and part of three. It's, these are the governance policies, they're the policies that guide the board in their work. So right now, as it stands, the areas that have the most votes, okay? We had policy, let's see here, zero, zero, one, point, zero, three, zero, which is Indian Education, received three votes. And we had several that received two votes. One was vacancies on the board, okay? Another one was principles of operation, so it's conduct and ethics. School board meetings. Another one received three is decisions in the absence of board policy. That's policy zero, zero, two, dot, zero, four, five, one. Another one with two votes was administrative regulations. Another one with two votes, advisory committees. Grievance procedures for allegations of discrimination was two votes. General principles of administration was two votes, and appointment and term of superintendent business administrator were two votes. So let's just count, two or more, so we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, exactly ten, and that's what we're looking for. So I would go ahead and recommend that what we do then is we take each policy that received fifty percent or more of the votes, which is ten policies, and we review those over the next ten months. That would be my recommendation, and I would just do them in order of policy number, if that makes any sense. And that actually is advantageous because it puts the Indian Education one first, and I think that's the one that may be at the forefront of all of our minds at this point in time, and it's one that received three of the five votes. So does that, that would be my recommendation. Just need some direction, President. We don't need to really vote on this, but would seek any, any direction the board would have.
Board members, any thoughts or ideas on that? Things that you want changed or done differently?
I agree with what the superintendent said. I think that puts it chronologically in a way that works, and we got ten instead of fifteen. Yeah, that's good.
I'm good with that.
I'm curious if we're going to look at Indian Education, is there something we're going to do to reach out and get some input on that, or how does that work?
Yeah, so Jaime, Jaime and Dean are working on this, and they have a meeting scheduled with the tribe, so what will happen is they'll bring back a recommendation to the policy committee, and I think we'll just try to run that as quickly as we can, if we're ready for, for next month. Perfect, if not, we'll just move it to, to October, but we'll, we'll do it either September or October, if that's okay with the board.
Yes, thank you.
Sounds great, Superintendent. Okay, our next one is the USD, UNA School District Board Handbook Review.
All right, if each of you will just click into the board handbook, go ahead and do that, and then I'm gonna do the same. And let's scroll down.
Do you have to go clear out to do that, Superintendent?
No, you should be able to click on it, it should open right up in.
So did you see that on yours, Dave? You have to, you have to refresh, because it wasn't on there earlier.
Oh, refresh your screen, yep. Yeah, you may have to go in, in and out of meetings again. I think the board handbook's been on there. Yeah, okay.
But I had to, I had to refresh.
So are you here?
Right, oh, is it just this link right here?
Yeah, that's right in there, number two, the top link, yeah.
And what I'd like you to do, once you get in there, is go to the bottom of page four. I'll wait till everybody's there.
Whoops, did I click two?
No, that's perfect, now go down to page four. Is everybody on? Okay, page four says, "The following principles of board leadership governance will help members of the UNA School District Board of Education maintain a focus on its most important responsibilities." Let's go through those. Denise, let's start with you, and if we could just read each of those, this is just a refresher, a review. Start with number one, if you would, Denise. So Superintendent, where are you at? Mine's not showing page numbers.
Bottom of page four, it's got a black box on the right with a circle around it. Oops, he's right, right here is what he's wanting.
Yeah, you're there.
That's that one. Oh wow, what happened to yours? Right there, uh, right there, yep, that's what, all right, that's why I couldn't find it. It just didn't seem yours, what's the difference?
Okay, number one, through, you guys ready? Strategic. Strategic planning, the board sets the direction for the school district.
Okay, Robin?
Two, the board develops, monitors, and improves district policy.
Number three, the board authorizes resources for the district, district operations, sets the budget, approves the tax rate, provides facilities, authorizes human resources, et cetera.
Number four, the board monitors performance toward district goals and provides accountability.
The board delegates authority.
Okay, Grant, you wanna read the rest of that, Dave? On to the next page.
Oh, sorry. The board delegates authority to the superintendent, superintendent to manage the district and provide leadership for the staff, students, and the community. Such authority is communicated through written policies that designate board ends and defined operating limits.
Okay, Grant, number six.
Number six, the board takes responsibility and is accountable to the community. The board collectively and individually takes full responsibility for board activity and behavior. Board deliberations and actions are limited to the work of the board as defined through policy and this handbook.
Okay, excellent. Does anybody want to either elaborate or have any questions on any of those six functions or responsibilities?
Superintendent, I think one that's hard for, number five, the board delegates authority, I ask myself regularly, people try to involve me or ask me questions, and sometimes I have to stop and think about, and that's, I'm sure, something that all the board members work on, well, I've delegated that to someone, so where's my place, and where do I draw the, the line, and how quick do I refer them back to the superintendent so that he can do his job? And sometimes people make that difficult.
Yeah, and I will tell you, you guys have done a really good job with this piece. Compared to other boards I've worked with, I really believe, I mean, very, very seldom do I, do I get, yeah, we're trying to find that sweet spot here, very, very seldom when, when something comes, you know, to your attention and you communicate to me, do I ever feel like, well, you know, maybe that process didn't work quite the right way, or, you know, I feel like each of you do a really nice job of, you know, either asking people to follow the chain of command, or addressing it in such a way that really makes me feel like, well, this is the way it should be, right? We're just communicating, it's good communication. So, so thank you, I just appreciate the way this board addresses and deals with complaints and concerns that come to your attention from the community. It's, it's, it's handled in a very, a very good way. I think our board committees help with that, too, because many times, those of you that are on committees are in the know, or you're able to contact the, the committee chair and, and, and express some things that might, might be of concern, so I, I, I believe that that helps us as well. Thank you.
So, President, I, I know that numerous times, my first go-to is, is the principals with those questions, you know, or those concerns of students or their parents, and so I appreciate the, the fact that when they get back to me, they say, well, the principal did or didn't, and, you know, and I always say the second step would, would be go to the superintendent, if you're not happy, and, and a lot of things are getting taken care of, and so appreciate those principals that work diligently and faithfully to take care of some of those, and a lot of them are simple issues, but yet, parents are frustrated, they wanna go straight to the board, and the principals can put that fire out, so.
They usually do. Yep, good. Any, any others?
So it looks like you're going to talk a little bit about it in the minutes, or, number, was it three? When we look at, no, wait, sorry. The goals, the, or, number four, the board monitors and performs, or, monitors performance towards, toward district goals. I, I see some of those are in our, I, I just appreciate what's there, and, and it makes, it's really easy for me to answer questions, is where we are. Are we better today than we were yesterday, and, and how can I prove that? So the more information we have on that, I think, at our fingertips, the better off we are, because I, my understanding is we've continued to, to grow in almost every category, in, in almost every school. And the things that happened with, with Eagle View, I, your response was, was excellent. I just thought that was, that was, how, how else could you respond to that question? And, and by tracking those numbers and having that at your fingertips, what a great response, so thank you.
Well, thank you, but that response only worked because of the growth they've made.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been that.
Without that, then, then we, we might have been searching for, for answers, but, you know, the, the response was, was there because of the amazing work that's happening at Eagle View.
Yeah, I agree, and that's, that's awesome.
Staffs are doing a great job. Yeah. Any, any others, comments? Okay, if it's all right, then President, we'll move on to, to the next part of leadership governance, and, and that's, I think it's important every year for us to, to crack open that handbook, and at least, you know, make sure that we're aware of what's in there. There's a lot of good information in there. All of the policies are, are there. Robin pointed out, there's a few links that are broken, but we are in the process of putting all of those policies on board docs, so we'll, we'll have them all in one place, easily accessible, and, and then we'll never have the problem of, is, is that the right link, or did we make the, you know, change to this policy? So I, I think that that's gonna be a big thing, and we should be there in the next six to eight weeks, we should have all of that conversion done. So with that, let's jump onto the second item, under leadership governance. Let's see, actually, we just, we just did the second item, that's policy review. The third item is the progress report that, Todd, that you were talking about. So last year in our district improvement plan, we had, we had two wildly important goals, and the first one, if you click on WG1, that document, the first goal that we had was that schools will show an increase in all areas measured on the student culture survey. The top of that didn't get in there right, but essentially, it's from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, all right? Now, what I wanna point out is, th- this is a little tricky, if you don't understand the context of, of this table, down the left-hand side, we have the actual survey items, right? And then you have a yes and no. Yes and no is not the answer to that question. Yes or no is, did we see growth from beginning of year to end of year? Did we see an improvement in the scores, right? That's, that's what the yes and no, so if, if it's a yes, if you look at the first one, I feel welcome at my school, all right? We had a number of thirteen, so we had thirteen different schools that participated in this, so this would include AVEC, it would include our preschool, and it would include our, our online school, UON, right? So that's why that N is thirteen. So of the thirteen schools, five of them saw growth on that question from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Eight did not see growth. That doesn't mean that, that kids don't feel safe, because in some cases, they were high at the beginning of the year, and they were high at the end of the year, right? So it's hard to show growth if you're already very high on some of those items, if that makes any sense. So it's not an indicator of kids not feeling safe, it's just which schools showed growth. Now, because of the nature of what I'm talking about right now, we pulled that off of our district improvement plan for, for this year, because it's, it's really, I, I don't know it's a great, if it's a great indicator, it might be a good indicator to show growth from schools that are low, but anyway, we, we, we had, we had some issues with the data and the interpretation of that, but I wanted to report to the board of where we were at relative to that WIG, okay? The next item, I feel safe at my school, so the first one was I feel welcome, I feel safe at my school. We had four that, that showed growth from the beginning to the end. I see my administrators around the school. Now, this, this is obviously an important one that we worked on. We had seven that saw growth from the beginning of the year to the end of year, so that's good. My teacher believes in me, seven showed growth from the beginning to the end. And my teacher helps me learn every day, we had eight that showed growth from the beginning to the end. And finally, I know what my teacher wants me to learn each day. Now, in many of our, well, several of our schools, we worked this, this past year on, on learning intentions and success criteria, so being very explicit about what we want students to learn. We had three pilot schools that focused on that pretty heavily, and so we, we did see a, a little more growth on, on that item, which was good. Any questions about this data?
So a question is toward the numbers that take this per school, is there a percentage that you look at, or is it?
Like a number of kids that take it? I, I don't know, principals, can you help with that? I mean, how, what percentage of your students take the climate survey? It would be, it'd be a pretty high percentage, wouldn't it?
Is it, it's not required, but it's something that they?
We, we can't turn out in class, and our advisory class to do it, so they all, it's not like we can, it's, let's do it.
This is our timeframe, and, so you're getting a pretty good percen, you're getting a good take rate when you look at these percentages, then?
Yeah, it should be a vast majority of kids that take the surveys.
This is just students that took this, or it's stakeholder, it's a stakeholder data?
This would have been the student results that you're looking at now.
Student for student culture, so you're pulling, so to clarify, can you clarify again? You said you're pulling this off of?
It's not on this year's district improvement plan. Let me explain why, okay? We believe that school culture is, it's extremely important to get student performance results, but our ultimate goal is, it's to be, become that district that's above the state average. We wanna be, we want our kids to perform high academically. We believe this is a means to get there, so, so we're gonna measure the academic side, that doesn't mean we're giving up on culture, we're still doing culture walkthroughs, we're, we're still giving the surveys, we're gonna measure it, but our, our number one WIG is, is to be above the state average in all assessed areas. This is a means to get there, so instead of having two, and maybe having a, an artificial focus on this, we, we really wanna focus on that academic side.
And Superintendent, sorry.
I'm done, I'm good.
I think, I remember when we talked about this, the key is if the students are enjoying the school they're in, that school, we should gain other individuals, or, you know, from other schools, or from homeschool, wherever they're at, if the kids enjoy what they're doing in school, and they feel like they're learning, and they feel like it's safe, and if, that's what helped grow those schools, right? That was what kind of our gist was on this?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's part of it, I, you know, I, I think everybody agrees that, that a school with a good positive culture is, is going to be a higher performing school. We believe that, right? But our, our WIG, our wildly important goal, is gonna focus on the end result now, which is the, those, those student scores, and that doesn't mean school, student scores are everything, right? I, I think as we educate the whole child, and, and we, we know that there's a lot more to education than just test scores, but the test scores, it's the only thing we can do to compare ourselves to other school districts across the state and other schools. It's the only measure we have to really compare apples and apples. So that's where we're, we're kinda putting our marbles there, but we are certainly gonna continue with, with some lead majors, right? Some things that we're going to do to, to try to get there, and, and culture will continue to be a big piece of that. Great, thank you. All right, now let's jump into the, the next piece, so the WIG number two, this one stays, right? This is the same, it's the same WIG, and all we've done is changed the date, and we'll probably continue to do that as long as the board feels that this is a priority, that we want, you know, if we're, if we're gonna get there, it ain't gonna happen overnight, but, but it's gonna be a gradual process. So this data, when, when we say teams, well, let's look at the middle schools, for example, right? You, you have, kids are tested in, in ELA, math and science, so each school, both are middle schools, they each have three teams each, that, that, there's three sets of data, right? So that's why the word teams is used when we're looking at this, if, if you wondered. Each one is really a data point from a school, if you look at it that way, right? So there's, there's quite a few, there's, there's, there's quite a few data points there. If you look at 2021, 2022, of, of all of the, the assessment data points for those teams, we had eighteen that were above the state average and sixty-five that were below, right? And we didn't provide data from the year before that, because that was the pandemic, and there was, that year was completely, assessment was really messed up that year, so we don't have good data. When you look at 2023 spring data, so we improved by five, right? So we have five more teams that scored above the state average than we had the previous year. So that's growth, it's progress. Are, are we even close to meeting our WIG? No, we're, we're not. Are, are we on track as far as, as growth? Well, this would indicate at least for, for a, a two-year period of time that we, we are moving in the right direction. Have a lot of work to do. Now, with that, I, I want to share some highlights, because I think it's important. Some things are happening in our district that are, I, I guess, just, just highlight areas. First, if, if you look at, you know what data disappeared off of this, Shawna, is our Eagle View data? It's just not there now, so I don't, I'll try to find it and, and bring it in, or I'll just speak to it. But if you look at our high school, in ninth and tenth grade, on, on the, the Aspire testing, the Aspire Plus testing, we test English, math, reading, and science in ninth grade, and we do that again for 10th graders, so there's eight data points. Those check marks represent above, it's, it's meeting that goal, right? So we're above the state average in seven of those eight areas, which is pretty impressive for our high school.
He changed screens on us, board member, he's on the next one. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Furthermore, if you look at the ACT composite score, our goal, the high school's goal was to score above a nineteen, and they hit nineteen point six, so they, they actually exceeded their goal. When you look at the ninth and 10th grade scores, and I didn't, I didn't bring, really, all I wanted to do today was share with you our progress toward the, those goals, right? And, and the data highlights, but when you look at how well our ninth and 10th graders performed, because the, the Aspire Plus is kind of a pre-ACT, it's a good indicator of how, how students are gonna assess when they hit 11th grade and take the ACT. So the high school has now bumped their goal up to twenty. I told Christie, I said, "That's too low, they're gonna score a twenty, above a twenty-one next year," but we'll, we'll see. We have, we have high expectations and high hopes, but, but the high school is definitely, there, there's some amazing things happening, the level of expectation and rigor is, has increased. Christie's done a, a super good job with her assistants in providing teachers with really good instructional leadership. There's just a lot of, of positive things happening, so I appreciate that and wanted to share that. So now, let's, let's talk about Eagle View. Again, I apologize, somehow the, the data disappeared off of board docs, but I've spoken to it enough that I can speak to it pretty, pretty clearly. At Eagle View Elementary, over the last three years, we've seen steady and consistent growth in the number of students that are either at grade level or above grade level on their cadence testing, okay? That tests their overall ability to read, it's very, a very important indicator, and probably the best indicator of future success, right? The number of kids just in three years that are, that are above grade level in their reading has doubled. So we've, we've doubled the number of kids that, that are reading above grade level. We've nearly doubled, I think about forty, we're, we're, we're close, we're about eighty percent, so almost doubled the number of kids that are proficient, and it's, Eagle View's the only school in the district that has, over the last three years, has reduced the number of kids in the red, the, the kids that are, you know, far below grade level, and increased kids in the proficiency area at the same time. So if you, if you really value growth, right, it, it's quite amazing what's happened to Eagle View in the last three years. And I, I wanna speak to that for a minute, there, I think there's a number of variables and factors that have, have played into this. You know, Chris Jones has done an amazing job, is Chris here tonight? I don't see Chris. Done an amazing job with his, his instructional leadership, but I think one of the, one of the big game changers over there at Eagle View has been the level of expectation and rigor. When we implemented CKLA as a district, and Jaime did a great job with his leadership on this as well, we, we really stuck to our guns on this idea that we're gonna teach kids at grade level. We're gonna teach them at grade level, we're not gonna, we're not gonna teach second graders first grade curriculum, we're gonna teach them second grade curriculum, and we stuck to that, and we had some resistance at first. At first, we had some teachers that didn't think the kids could do it, and were kinda frustrated, out of the chute, but it didn't take long. If, if I remember, after about three or four months, teachers started seeing growth and progress. And so if, if there's any silver bullet or magic to what's happening in Eagle View, I really believe it has to do with increasing the level of expectation and rigor for the kids, and, and that, and it's, it's been successful. Now, when you combine that with excellent, like, we've got a great coaching program over there, so the, the professional development's been good, leadership by Chris, you know, there's been a number of things come together that have, have caused that, but we should be very happy and pleased that, that our, you know, that our, our kids over there are performing maybe better than they ever have, and very optimistic about where this is gonna go. We all know that if kids learned to read at the level of proficiency by third grade, their, their graduation rate, their success rate in school and life, everything improves and changes, increases, and, and so the more kids we get to grade level, the, the more likely those kids are gonna succeed throughout their educational career and life. Eagle View is looking more like a typical school now in their student performance. We've got nearly half of the kids, when you look at third grade, just K3, nearly half of the kids now are reading at grade level versus twenty to thirty percent historically. That's a big difference, big change. So hats off to Eagle View, we're, we're going to recognize their school during our opening institute and, and celebrate the, the thing, the wonderful things that are happening there, as well as at the high school. So anyway, any questions from, from the board about the data or the data highlights?
Are we gonna, are we gonna do this like every August?
Yes.
Just in our, in our handbook, it says, it said aside time to look at your?
Yes.
Goals and your accountability piece.
Yeah, because we don't really have good data till August.
Yeah.
We might get it in July, but we won't have it in June, so August would be the earliest that we can review previous year's growth and results, and I think it's healthy for the board to, that's part of that accountability piece, right? You gotta know how we're doing, so. All right. Let's, I think we're, we're to committee reports, President, so back to you.
That last section of that, and I clicked on it, that's in your board docs, is actually the one the superintendent was looking at when he was doing the policies. is actually the one the superintendent was looking at when he was doing the policies that had been selected. So that's what that last one is there.
Committee. That's before we had all five responses.
Yes. Yep. The superintendent has to, Tonya's feeling guilty because she took hers just a few minutes ago. I took mine yesterday afternoon, so I I seen it and then thought, I'll do that tomorrow, and that was three weeks ago. Tomorrow's slow coming. Committee reports. Who wants to kick us off? Denise?
We haven't met, so I don't have anything. We don't meet till September, I think, so.
Okay, no problem. Robin?
Not much going on in my category, other than, I did forget to say, in the handbook, we need to make sure that the committees are updated, because I think.
I just checked it and they are.
I think Denise, is Denise?
If you use the link, Robin, they're 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 correct.
Okay.
I think on the audit one's wrong.
I think Denise is the chair, isn't she, for that?
Yeah, Todd and I switched on the audit one.
Let me, let me pull that up, because I can make that change real quick.
I don't know why Todd doesn't have enough to do, so.
Did you guys look at the link off of the handbook? Is that what you?
I I was, but let me, let me look again. Just verify. When I can talk to, so not much is, we didn't meet policy committee during July socialized for UB Tech. UB Tech Foundations Tonight, I'm on that affiliated board. We will be honoring Kathleen McKechnie, who has put in thirty years in the foundation and on the foundations board. And then just to speak to just USBA stuff, I think I've just dealt with it, with everybody. We have the pre-delegate and delegate Assembly coming up where we vote on legislative priorities. So that's coming up at the end of August, and we're going to have, it's great because our region, which is Daggett, Duchesne, Uinta, we'll have two at large and one from each district, so we'll have five votes, which is great. And then we have the Leadership Academy coming up in September, and Dave is going to be on a breakout, so that's great. Those, that's my report.
I don't know how they talked me into that, took me a while. Sorry about that, Robin, I didn't know it was out of date. I hadn't looked.
That's okay. I I just read it today.
Okay.
Big deal. I just read it.
Todd? I know you've had one committee meeting.
She would have been happy with me being there. Speaking of which, auditing is is basically started, and Audit Committee will, could be receiving calls based on some questions that they'll ask. That should be a well, a while down. I think some of those things. Oh, Grant, I'm going through the minutes. We talked a little bit about the numbers on the track and where we were at on the track. I think we came in, we came in square on that building, the track, the BMS, right? Or the UMS?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And then we talked about some E-rate purchase orders. Nothing that really needs to be brought up in here. Obviously, each year, we we continue to purchase Chromebooks to kind of keep us a steady flow. So that, so it sounds like a lot of money, but we're reimbursed for that. I think one of the keys was we we did receive some additional transportation funding from the state, and I think that's, that will be put to good use as well, so. I think those are the the highlights, unless anybody's got any questions on auditing or on the financial committee. We we kind of talked a little bit, we spent quite a bit of time on on planning out for the future and and where will we, where will we put the money to make sure it's earmarked? So that the public understands that maybe we may look like we have additional funds or an over-budgeted amount of funds, but the reality is, is we'll earmark those specifics coming up in the future. I think we've talked a little bit about, when you look at the Dave's group, there's going to be some schools that need some maintenance in the near future or far future, and so we've built, what, five schools almost simultaneously? And those could all come up with maintenance at the same time, and so we've got a plan for that. And so we've asked Grant to kind of help us put that, continue to put that ten and twenty-year plan together, so. Something that, input from both committees, so I think it's long-term, but I, we're excited about where we're going to be with it, so.
So over the last month, we've actually done some substantial work on that. I I have, I don't, I haven't even shared it with Grant yet, so we'll, we'll get together and 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 get that ready for those next round of committee meetings.
So Superintendent, you say that, you've got two committees that kind of.
Yeah, they work together.
They work together, and so, so, and it's good that the two of you participate in in those committees. Dave and I both serve on the Finance Committee, and so he brings, you know, where we're going with the Facilities Committee. And that always, you know, it's, those two have to work simultaneously in order to.
As, I'll just mention, as I've been working on the the outlook part, kind of the forecasting part, it's really tricky because when you look at our enrollment numbers, the forecast is pretty flat. But when you look at our economy and the fact that right now there is a lot of housing here, right? However, there's a lot of subdivision requests and permits, so we're, we're, we know that there's there's likely to be quite a bit of building happening here over the coming year, maybe two years. With that, there's going to be a little bit of guesswork in this, there just has to be. We we use the data that we have around us, and there's going to have to be some some data-driven, educated guessing to some extent as we plan out the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So I've started that process, and I think the best way to do it is use the data we have, bring it back to the committees, let the committees really roll that over until we feel pretty comfortable about, yes, by year 2035, we're going to have a a high school enrollment of, you know, twenty-seven hundred or whatever, whatever we project that to be. And and that's what we're going to have to run with. It's tough.
Great, and and maybe you've already done so, Grant, but I don't know if we've introduced our new secretary for for that committee?
Holly Shivers?
Yeah, I I may have done, been done last meeting and I missed it, but.
I'm not aware, so, yes, Holly Shivers is is now the secretary for the, for me, for the business administrator and taking place on that committee and taking part of it and minutes and helping us out.
Great, that's all I have, thank you.
Tonya?
We talked a lot about that twenty-year plan, just as well on the Facilities Committee, and we just talked about the fun things we're seeing happening, that the track was completed and the pickleball courts and the ag building is coming along, I believe, a little ahead of schedule, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, they're right, they're right there, yeah.
So that was really good, talking about trying to stay within budget on the preschool and balancing all of that, and am I, what am I missing there?
Let's see, the ag, the ag building has walls inside of it. It's kind of realistic now, if you go by and look at it, it's exciting. And so anybody that hasn't stopped by and had a peek at it, there's pretty congenial. When I was there, they didn't run me off, and so I wand, I wandered around and and looked at things. I'm excited about that and the room that that will open up at the high school for us to do, to do other things. We have some electric buses. I believe all ten are here now, Superintendent?
I I don't know.
I I don't think all ten are, I think we have seven at the moment.
Seven?
We're waiting on the last.
So we'll, that's one of them things, time will tell, you know, when you buy a new car, you know when it's wore out, whether it was a good one or not. And so they, time will tell on the electric buses. We have great hopes for it. One thing I do want to kind of clarify so that there's not a question down the, down the road. In the last board meeting, we approved the contract between us and the college. And in trying to get everything straight, and the superintendent can correct me, and he was in, after a million emails back and forth, they didn't like, it was originally set up, the last the board heard, with a forty-year contract with a ten-year extension. They did not like the ten-year extension. And so basically what happened is, is they said, we want you to take that out and just make it a forty-year contract. And the superintendent said, let's just take that out and make it a fifty-year contract, and they said, okay.
I wish it was that easy, but.
Well, I made it sound pretty easy. It was pretty easy on my end. Anyway, so the only change that maybe board members or you guys didn't know about, that is just a straight fifty-year contract, and to me, that's a win-win. We don't, in forty years, that doesn't need to be renegotiated. And so, Robin, did you have a question?
Yeah, just when will they break ground on that and will the buses be ready? Some of the buses, the electric buses be ready for the first of school?
Okay, so first, first question, break ground. It was originally scheduled for September twenty-fifth, and now it's, it's going to be after the October board meeting. Could be the day after, but we we will, the board will have to take some final action on the actual bid, right? The the amount it's going to cost us, and if the board approves that at the October board meeting, then they will be able to break ground immediately thereafter.
And the buses?
Oh, sorry, yeah, forgot the second piece of that. Yeah, so the electric buses are operational right now. We're we're just, we don't have the, we don't have the charging infrastructure project done, but we did retrofit, so we have some two-twenty outlets we can plug them into. It's less than ideal, it's not, I mean, it, you know, the the management part of it's not there, but we can charge the buses. I I will just share with with the board, because this is interesting. Our transportation staff did take the buses up, they took one of the buses up to Flaming Gorge Lodge. They wanted to see how it performed going up and back. Took it up, and on the way back, just before they started coming down the switchbacks, we were only at sixteen percent battery life. But by the time they got down back to the office, it regenerated, recharged those batteries coming down, because you you don't have to even use the brakes, the the motor and the gen, you know, generates electricity and charges those batteries. I don't know, it was like in the mid twenties when they got back, and so that was a very successful trip. It did great on the grades and the mountains, and and so we're, we're pretty excited that, for what we're going to use them for, which is just around, you know, the the valley here, those buses should perform really well.
And I I will add that the the process of getting the infrastructure installed to do the charging and all of that on a fast basis and optimization is is ongoing and happening. Mark Rich deserves a lot of praise and for his work in that regard.
We've been forever getting this accomplished. We can fuel a bus up with diesel and we can fuel one up with propane. I won't tell you it's complete, there's still a couple of lights, it's got to be stood up out there, I'm going to get them, not a candle, because that's explosive, but maybe an LED lighter or something. But we can fuel up at our own station, so that's ready. Board members, do you have any, facilities is a big one, and there's a million things that you talk about. Is there anything that you have any questions about? Superintendent, did I leave anything out that that you can think of?
I think it's just important to maybe briefly discuss, President, or just our plans to to look at selling some of our properties. And I mean, we can't use details in a public meeting, but but we're, we're looking to to optimize and 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 hopefully at some point find properties that go along with that twenty-year plan for future building.
Superintendent's talking about possibly the ground behind the high school. We did ask for an appraisal on it, and the property in Glines has been appraised. So we're hoping maybe that somebody would like to buy some property from us that's not good to us for school buildings and put a subdivision or something on it, and maybe in the future, we could pick up a a piece of property that would be good for a school that we could possibly need in the future. And so, so that everybody's up to date on it. As far as demolitions go, nothing's set in stone, there hasn't been an agreement issued, but it looks like we may, looks like we may get the district, the old district office demolished this winter and cleaned up. The rock's set over in the corner, and we're going to save a couple of the big trees that's there. So we're hoping on, maybe in the next month or so, we can get something tied up on that so that that happens. You can get buildings demolished cheaper in the wintertime when they can't work on other projects than you can in the summertime. So we'd like to get that ready so that at, whoever gets that bid, at their discretion sometime between now and spring, that could happen. Yes?
And what about the MTC building? We just hanging on to that? MTC?
Up in Mazur.
Training Center, yeah.
You know, that has just kind of set to the side of the radar, and we haven't done anything or discussed anything about it in the in the last six or eight months. As as you remember, the last thing we really done there, the superintendent had Donnie and his crew winterize it so that we wasn't paying heat, cooling and and water bills there for as far as lighting and stuff, but that's really as far as that has went at, has went at this point. If you'd like us to put that on the docket and discuss it, if there's something, a thought maybe board members are having about that building or something, now would probably be a good time to mention that.
No thoughts, I was just curious.
Yeah, the building really is hard to heat and hard to cool and needs quite a lot of work to turn it into to something. So I don't know really if that's a a valuable building anymore for the school district. So something in the future we probably need to look at.
So we forgot to mention the weight room at the UMS, that we were going to move some old weights over there, is that?
Yeah.
Thanks, Shawna.
The, the high school weight coach, oh, I'm going to get killed. Give me a name, somebody. Stansgard. He, Christie's laughing at me, yeah, you can throw a golf ball at me, I can't remember Christie's name, let alone anybody else's. They, he come up with a great idea, and he said, we've got, because if you remember right, we're putting new weight equipment and a couple of windows and a few things in the weight room at the high school. He said, take the weight equipment that we're taking out of the high school and move it to one of the, to me, they were shop buildings, because when I went to that school, that was my high school. But there's five buildings out behind that's teal colored, and two of the north ones are still in good operating order. And so they're going to take one of them buildings and take that weight equipment from the high school and put it down there. Mr. Stansgard said for about eighty-five hundred dollars, he could fix that building up with what it needed so that they had a quality weight room and give them something else to offer there at UNA Middle School. So UNA Middle School's got a new track, and they got, they're going to have a weight room, and we thought that was a, that was a great idea. And so that's what's happening with them weights and stuff that come from there instead of turning them into scrap iron. Did I do that justice, Superintendent?
Yes, and students from Vernal Middle School will have the opportunity to utilize that after-school hours if if they so desire. So we'll have some supervision over there and have a nice after-school program for student athletes that want to prepare themselves for high school. So it's kind of exciting. If you go over there, there's a lot of square footage. They're not only going to have weight equipment in there, but they're going to have plyometric stations. Kids can do box jumps and all all kinds of plyometric activities to improve their athleticism, so it's pretty exciting.
Me and Robin's going there with our bionic knees.
So, and can the UMS students go play pickleball at BMS?
Absolutely, yep.
He said no.
No.
After hours.
After hours. After-school programs, I got you.
Okay, anything else on facilities? Okay, with that, we're going to move on forward then. Policy revisions, policies for approval on second reading. Dr. Lee's policy on, seems like we've talked about this one for six months, is this a holidays policy? seems like we've talked about this one for six months, is this a holidays policy?
Yeah, I know, okay. Yeah, you've seen this one a few times, right? Um, but we're bringing it tonight on second reading, remember, we took it back to negotiations, um, this is where we are adding June nineteenth, um, to our holiday policy. If you check, if you had time to review the memo and read in the background, um, and the rationale, we're removing one day, um, at New Year's Eve, and adding June nineteenth to the policy. And if this is approved tonight, and then next month, you'll see the bereavement policy, that was part of the negotiations, in, in agreement to bring this policy in the way that it is tonight, that, then, uh, we would be bringing a bereavement policy. Any questions about this one?
No, thank you for that. Negotiations and change on this.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
I think we're good.
Okay, great.
Policy zero-zero-two-point-oh-seven-two-oh, public appearances at board, board meetings, and our BA, Grant Sodder will take that.
Thank you, President. So, this is, uh, one of those governing policies that the board recommended be reviewed and, and revised, uh, last year. First reading, last, uh, board meeting, we talked about how it'd been reviewed by the, uh, executive committee, uh, reordered a, a little bit, and updated the address, Superintendent and I made some changes to section two-point-one to clarify things. The board unanimously approved this on first hearing, and, uh, our recommendation would simply be that it, the board approve it on second hearing, if there are no further questions.
I, I do have some, sorry.
Okay, go.
I'm sorry, President. I just, I wanna know what my fellow board members think of two-point-five, I, I think that's how we've been, um, let me just frame it this way, so we, with Robert's rules and parliamentary procedure, we're really tight on, like, only one thing in my mind, and that is, we always state the, um, motion before we have discussion, which I don't think in all cases is really great, but, we do it, like that. But on this one, and this is how we've done it, when, when, when there's public input or somebody's speaking to us, um, two-point-five just says it shall be in order for members of the board to interrupt a speaker at any time to ask questions in order to clarify the discussion, but if you go, it kinda, um, is in conflict with two-point-two, which talks about, which is more parliamentary procedure, with set, which talks about, the board president may call on an individual and answer questions, make statements, and give input. So, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm curious, if we wanna continue, I mean, to me, those are two dichotom, two different ideas, I feel like, it would be great if we have a process and a procedure that's, I know the expectation, 'cause I know that I, I don't know if I'm supposed to, to address the president and ask him if, or her, if I can talk to the person, or if I just talk to the person, so, I'm, I'm curious your thoughts, that jumped out at me.
Okay, can I address that? Sure, President. So, Robin's right, as far as parliamentary procedure, you would usually wanna address the president before addressing somebody that's presenting, um, but it's also within the control of this board to make exceptions to parliamentary procedure, which this policy does, right? Whatever is comfortable and you feel good about as board members, uh, you, you can do, um, but, but the, the standard for parliamentary procedure would be that you, uh, you ask the president if it would be an appropriate time to ask a question, it's just a more formalized way to do it. With that, back, back to you, Robin, your president.
Okay, so we're talking about when somebody's making a presentation and giving us information, but we're not talking about maybe necessarily if somebody is upset, or trying to clarify a point to the board, or are they the same, Robin?
Well, in my mind, it was any public, since, since this policy is specifically public appearances, it was kind of, well, in, in this section, it's just the agenda item, so it's if someone's on the agenda, speaking to us, but I guess I was kind of addressing both. And I'm just, I just wanna know what, what our procedure is, 'cause I'm, I just wanna be consistent.
For me, I'll make it easy for you guys, you're not gonna hurt my feelings, I've never restricted anybody that I knew of from asking or doing what they wanted as the board president, but it really has nothing to do with me, because next round, I may be setting down the line somewhere else, so, what does the board, the only thing I wanna be careful with, the only, I don't mind anybody gathering information, the only thing I wanna be careful with is, when somebody's upset, we wanna be careful that we don't escalate the situation in a board meeting, and I'm just being really honest. And so, you know, some, sometimes people just need to be heard, they don't need to be, um, questioned or pounded on, sometimes, um, we even have to figure out, sometimes people ask questions, that we have to go gather information and bring it back before we can, last thing we wanna do is give out information that is not, is not correct, unintentionally or intentionally, either one, and so, with that being said, how do you board members want, how do you wanna work it?
So, so I think the way it's written, if you, if you look at the way it's written, it's an agenda item, which patron input is allowed, uh, and during that discussion, if we, I guess if there's question, the president of the board has the ability to ask individuals, that doesn't mean ask the board, that's ask individuals, that would be our principals or others attending for that input, and, uh, and then if you drop down to two-dot-five, uh, I think it's a, a natural discussion, if, if we have a patron or speaking to us on some point, and we need to clarify something, the process here gives us, you know, the question to say, hey, can you clarify that for me? And I think it, it simplifies the process, so I like the way it's written, so.
Are you okay with that procedure, Robin?
I just wanna hear, that's Todd, how about?
Okay, Denise?
Oh, I think, I like it, because it gives us a, a chance if we need to ask questions to, for, you know, I think we're all respectful enough to not, you know, you know, be disrespectful to people, but no, I like it. I think it covers everything.
I don't think I have an opinion on it, I can see both points of view, I, I think, I can see what Robin's saying, because there could be times that would prevent a problem, and other times it would just eat up a lot of unnecessary time and keep us from moving forward, being able to ask questions to clarify. As long as they're really clarifying questions, my only concern is if it, if, if we use a question to make a point, you know, that maybe we're continuing a debate or something, then it might become a problem, I don't know how you prevent that, um, but.
Either way, you're gonna state that same question, whether you have permission or not.
Right.
And I might just add, uh, President, if I may, two-point-four, I feel, gives the president the, the authority to be able to curb discussions and, and, yeah, and, and cease escalations if, if he or she feels that's happening, and so, I, I think it's one of those, um, be- because I think Robin's point is mostly about making sure that order is kept, and I think two-point-four allows that to be able to happen.
Yes?
I love this discussion. Um, the, the reality is, is in, in, in rural Utah, a, a lot of boards are a little bit loose with parliamentary procedure, just because it, it kinda fits with the, um, our more, how do we say it? Less formal, relaxed lifestyle, so it's perfectly okay to go either direction on this, we're not doing something wrong to go against parli- we're probably only halfway there with parliamentary procedural, really, right? So, um, I, it's, it's a great observation Robin's made, um, but it's totally up to the board, this is a preference thing.
And then just one more comment, and this is kinda just for the, um, the policy committee. We've, we were going to in July or June meeting, which meeting did we cancel, anyway? Is that June? I know, oh, wait, yeah. But we did cancel something.
Our policy meeting?
We did. We were gonna talk about, we've been talking about, um, guiding questions when policy comes through us, just so I'm, I'm just putting this out in the public, for me to remember, be on the minute, just, um, when we, maybe starting September first, that we really, 'cause it's a work in progress, we're working on it, but that we really stick to our guiding questions, which is, comes to us in the proper format that we've all agreed on in that committee, which is general statement of policy, then it definitions if we needed them, and then the policy, anyway. Just putting that out there, and, I think our district's done great, actually, you know, going back to this, of public appearances at board meetings, that was a pretty hot topic in the legislature this year, but we've always welcomed, and I think we've done a good job, so, I just, mine was just a procedural question, and I'm great with that, so, good with all the content, so.
Okay, everybody okay with that, then? Thank you, Grant.
So, President?
Yes?
As, as you go down to that, I think, I've always had a lot of questions on patron input and the process, and I think that was one of those things, obviously marked on our survey, but, when you look at three-dot-oh, you know, it, what's a challenge for a patron that doesn't understand the process, is to come, assuming they're going to get a chance to speak at a board meeting, and, and not, not be a topic that's on the agenda, and, and I just don't know how you address that. You know, three-dot-one does talk a little bit about that ability to do that, I, I don't know if that's something we've ever adopted or used, so.
It does say, though, that are not on the current, uh, meeting agenda, right, Todd?
Yes, and the board may set aside some time for patron input during the public meeting, during patron input, and any individual or group may be heard on topics that are not on the current meeting agenda.
But that's our discretion, right?
At the board's discretion, yes, that's, and I, I didn't know that was in there.
Just because, yeah, I mean, it's a, ours, it's our meeting in public, so I guess it's just, and it's just to serve as efficiency and.
I think we've done that in the past.
No, I think we have.
Have we allowed some people to speak based on, I think you said?
We have.
We've had some come up, and then we've had some that we've denied, and I think that process, it's written, and I didn't know it to be written, so, I, I'm just glad I see that it's written there now, it makes more sense to me, and so, really, it's at the president's discretion at that time, I think, right? That's how we've done it in the past, so.
Yeah, for it to be an agenda item, that's the one that has to be in written notice the Friday before the board meeting and to the superintendent.
Two weeks before.
Is it two weeks before? Yes, Grant says.
Yes, uh, two-point-one talks about patrons wishing to be placed on the agenda and need to submit a request.
Oh, yeah, two big letters, too, huh?
Yeah, and you've made some changes in that, that's.
That's if they wanna be on the agenda, correct?
On the agenda.
I think that's so confusing sometimes to, to the community, because it's not really clarified, what's the difference between an agenda item and a non-agenda item, how come some people can sign up and walk up there, and some, you know, I don't know if there's a way to, to make a small statement that's kind of out there that people can read, or published in a way that helps people understand the difference.
Yeah, there's actually three things, right? You have people that, that come here and sign up to, to comment on an agenda item.
Yeah.
You've got people that, the Friday before, they, they can, they can sign up to address the board, right, on a non-agenda item. And then you have the third thing, which is, we're gonna create a special agenda item for somebody to come and address the board on. So, those are three different layers of planning, if it's, if it's a new agenda item, it's gotta go through the executive committee, that's why the, the two-week rule is in play, right? If it's someone that just wants to, to come and speak to something that's not on the agenda, doesn't require any planning on our part, we're just listening, uh, that's the Friday before, just so that we're aware of what's coming up, we can prepare ourselves, right? So, it i- it is a little bit tricky, um, I think the best thing maybe is that we do try to clarify that with a document out here, that might be the best way to do it.
A lot of districts have pamphlets, too, that sit out there, just informational things about what we do, our meeting, yeah, how our meetings were, and we, and we do have a little, you know, paragraph, but we probably could do a better job, I think, of educating the public.
Didn't we used to put something on the back of the agenda?
It used to be under the business.
We did, we got, we probably need to go back to that, I think, I think we put the policy on.
On the back.
We, yeah, and we, that would, would probably be the best thing to do, is just to put it on the back of the agenda.
Yeah, just clarify it, I think, a little bit more.
Just put those three things, right?
We've seen some folks walk out of here with steam boiling out of their.
Yeah.
We'll do, we'll do that for next month, and Sean has already taken notes.
Yeah, 'cause our goal is really to listen to these individuals, to find out what, what their concern is.
And Superintendent, I know, in the past, that when they've left frustrated, that you've contacted every one of them that I'm aware of, so, appreciate that, too, so. Well, we don't want people to be upset with us, right? We're not here to dis-.
But it's not like we, but it is just, if somebody's seen that process and wonders, what in the world's the board not letting them speak, or, you know, and, and don't realize that, that you're actually following up with those individuals anyways, so.
Okay, with that one, board member? Well, Grant, Grant skipped the executive meeting, so we just hung him out, purchases over fifty thousand, is Grant's, too.
Right. Did we need to talk about the minutes before?
Did I skip one?
Yep.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, that's what I mean, your name's written down there so far, we, we better do minutes first.
Okay. All I have to say on that is that there, there were some clerical changes made, just some, some, uh, typos and things fixed, but, uh, generally speaking, they were as sent to the board and as posted, and, uh, entertain any questions or comments on them.
Board members, any other changes? Okay, with that, we'll go to purchases over fifty thousand, or contracts needing approval?
Okay. On this, we have just a few, uh, items, so, uh, as stated in my, my memo to the board, we're in the process, and, and, uh, Todd, Todd already kind of alluded to this earlier, we're in the process of, uh, rotating some of our Chromebooks throughout the district, and so, one of the, the purchases over fifty thousand is a, regards that, the annual Chromebook rotation, uh, this is something that was approved in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four capital outlay budget, um, it's to a state contract vendor, and, uh, total cost will be two-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-eight dollars. Similarly, uh, another approved budget item, uh, the foods department is, uh, is making it, uh, some, some bulk food purchases at this time through, from a variety of vendors, uh, there are several open POs that were referenced in my memo, I won't go through each of them unless you ask me to, um, but this, as I said, is just something that's coming out of the fiscal year twenty-four budget, and, uh, kind of the, all throughout the ordinary, ordinary course of business. I guess before I move on to the contracts, any questions about the, the purchases over fifty thousand need to be addressed? Okay, we have a, a contract that, uh, so, a little background to this, is, at the December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two board meeting, uh, the, the business administrator presented a, a contract for approval that was greater than one year, and it was, was, uh, with EMS Link, a company that, uh, has bought out the, the company that, uh, runs our financial software and is moving to a cloud-based platform. The contract at that point specified that the migration to the new software would happen in April, but for staffing changes and a variety of other reasons, that hasn't happened, and so, we've been continuing to use our old financial software, and, and will be using that through November, uh, at, at least, um, and what has happened is, as, as I've now stepped into the role of business administrator, I've been working with, uh, Link to, uh, get, schedule and get this migration happening, and, uh, what happened is, as we started negotiations, we're, we're getting, uh, our current financial software on a prorated basis, but we're going to be, uh, entering into a new agreement with board approval, of course, uh, that would be, instead of the three years that it was, it would be a three and a half year, because we've got a little bit of time that we're gonna have over there, so this is something that simply, something the board has already looked at and approved, uh, it's just a matter of, uh, to follow policy, we're bringing it to you at this time, so, um, any questions about that? Okay, lastly then, in this category, we've got, there's been a request for proposal made to purchase a digital monitoring system, previously, we've been working with a, a company on a trial basis to see how that would work, and we, we set out a, a request for proposal, received some bids from various companies, and had a bid committee meet together to review the bids, and the company, Securely Inc., was the highest scoring proposal, with a total score of eighty-six point eighty-five, and a cost of sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven per year, to be renewed annually for five years. Per policy, we're just asking that the, the board would approve the purchase of services from this, Securely Inc., at that price, and if there are any questions, Dean Wilson is, is able to address kind of what the software would do, and why it was selected amongst that, so.
So, Dean, how does this differ from what we've just purchased, and why is what we just, what we just purchased isn't going to provide the same function, or could it?
Are, are you referencing Ricotta?
Yeah, Ricotta.
You bet, so, let me talk a little...
Sorry, we had to get you...
No, 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 heck, I work for y'all, this is a little... No, absolutely, we have Ricotta, which is really, really good as far as our monitoring, our access controls, all of the above. What Securely does is it really works on the backside, and is really, really good at identifying what we call a transient threat. We've been asked to be trained in what we call C-Stack, or Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. One of the basic tenants of that is do we have early detection software where we can intervene prior to a threat becoming active? So to give you an instance, we've had three students in our district that I can say with certainty their lives have been saved because of what they were searching. What I always like to tell people is, kids lie to their parents, kids lie to their friends, kids sell the lie to Google in terms of what they're searching, and so what this does is goes through on a district-owned or district-connected device, and really scrubs for, is a student at risk of self-harm, or is a student at risk of harming someone at the school? What ends up happening is the activity on the backside of our network is quantified, and then as the lips come in, they're phoned up to the appropriate channel.
Oh.
For instance, our licensed clinical social workers will get threats of kids that may be nervous, anxious, depressed, et cetera. Our school resource officers, on the other hand, may get threats that are becoming active towards the school, or at least presenting as active towards the school. The idea being is we get an early read, we can move into the office and figure out what's going on. The way this actually worked, one time when we were in directors' meeting Thursday, all the directors were meeting in the office, I give an alert that says, more or less, somebody is thinking about doing harm to the high school. I'm like, oh, I need to step out of the meeting and call Christie. Well, before I even stepped out of the meeting, I got an alert from Jason Turmoto that said, students have been identified, students are in the office, students are in investigation. I'm like, that's exactly how this should work, this is awesome. So that's exactly what Security does, it gives us the opportunity to intervene early. The other thing that Security does is ask components called Rhythm. It's an opportunity for students to check in or not. If they want to come in and say, I'm nervous, I'm hungry, I'm anxious, et cetera, there's five indicators that we look for, it's all about student wellness, if we can provide those opportunities for kids who those deficits meet those deficits, those kids are more likely to engage in the classroom, they're more likely to learn at higher levels. The other nice thing with Rhythm is it has a parent component, as a parent, I want to know what my kid's saying, I can see in real time on their dashboard what my own student is responding. Again, it's a good opportunity for parents to maybe see what their student is doing as opposed to what their student is presenting at home. So it's just a transparent tool, it really gives us the opportunity to intervene early. Like I said, we have had three students that have entered into suicidal ideation, active planning, and in the midst of active planning, we've been able to either intervene as a school, or get parents to intervene on behalf of the school. We have a student who was transferred, ordered to the hospital, went to media scene, we're able to get that student out of the medical lab.
Great, much different than what I thought this program was, so that's why, those are two totally different, I, I'd assumed that, when you made the statement, that, that's only on school-owned facilities, so that could be school Wi-Fi, even though it's a child's, a child's stuff.
Handheld device.
Or on the transverse of that, one student takes a Chromebook home, for instance, we have a student that more or less had three really, really risky searches within a fifteen minute timeframe. The suicidal ideation had about fifteen minutes to effect, even when they were being with the student. This was after hours, this was us just having this run on our devices, what was awesome is the clinical social worker picked up, identified parent, contacted parent, parent was able to intervene on a Saturday where we couldn't. So really, it's a three sixty view of where our students are at in terms of their, their searches, and then it really gives us a natural pocket point to provide some of those responses.
So it says bullying as well, that could be something that, that they're searching, or, or a text message back and forth?
Yeah, one of my favorite features, believe it or not, kids are pretty smart these days, they'll get on a Google Doc, and they may say, Denise, you're rude, crude, and socially unacceptable, and then they make it white, and then if you're just randomly scanning, you just see a blank sheet that says, okay, well, it says Denise, mean, I'm not gonna deal. If you highlight that and turn it like a color, well, now we see what's going on. What's awesome about this tool is if I said Denise is rude, crude, socially unacceptable, insert expletives, I get so popular, I say this thing twice. Dean, you really want to send this message? This appears to this may be outside of the guidelines of your acceptable use policy. Heck, yeah, I don't like Denise, I think she is rude, crude, socially unacceptable. Well, send that. Well, now, when they land in my office, in a safe school area, and their parent's sitting across from me, I can say, here's what we did, we had an opportunity to intervene and help your kid make the right choice. Our best effort, and giving your kid full autonomy, your kid made the active choice to bully, harass, intimidate Denise. Based on that, we're going to take X, Y, and Z action, or, you know what, your kid got a prom, we want to celebrate the fact that after this prom, this kid made the right choice, because these are the natural logical consequences that could have been applied had he chose to go through with this. So really, it's a tool to teach, and it's a tool to catch slow, you really, it's, it's a tool to catch threats when they're transient before they become active, and, and really that is the best practice of what the legislature has put forward in terms of school safety. So really, I'm, I'm excited about this tool, it helps on the social, emotional front, it also helps on the heartening or the, uh, school safety for the schools as well.
And, and this pays for it across junior highs, high schools, or across the school board?
Every school.
Every school, wow, that's a pretty reasonable cost then.
When you think that we saved three lives in one year, paid zero dollars so far, twenty thousand dollars to save a life is pretty cheap, so.
Agreed. Well, I didn't realize that's what it was, thank you.
Absolutely.
I assume the legalities of that are all, that's what scares me, is, that's why I asked the question.
Let me help, Securely Inc. is actually one of the preferred vendors, they, they meet and exceed all state and federal requirements as far as data privacy goes.
So, yeah, because that's, that's a scary line across, so.
Robin, did you have a question?
Just a clarifying question, because I know Mindy had talked about rhythms before, or rhythm, software, so you said, so Securely does both, is, I mean, we're paying for both the rhythms and the filter?
Yeah, so, and there's, there's a host of products that, that are bundled within this, so Securely has basically what we call twenty-four, which is twenty-four monitoring, where a live person, it's not just somebody filtering, it's a live person that can take a look and see, is this threat really active, and if nobody's responding to the school desert, they will respond on our behalf. That safety net is huge. Rhythm is applied to this as well, to where our social workers now have a logical workflow to where, you have fifteen kids that are experiencing hunger every day, they're probably experiencing food scares to eat, we're looking at teen centers, those are options, now maybe we can get them some help as far as getting food. The other tool within Rhythm's suite, so you have, or in Securely, you have Securely, you have twenty-four, you have Rhythm, and then you have what's called Aware. Aware is that tool that I mentioned earlier, to where kids get the opportunity to either override or make the choice, which needs some natural logical consequences, because I get a little alert that says, little Jones, come have a meeting, we'll have that meeting and build some skills.
Sometimes our kids act impulsively, that's pretty common, right, for kids in their adolescence, and this particular tool gives them the opportunity to think twice before they do something that's either hurtful or illegal, so it's good. Great, thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
I just think it's awesome.
Yeah.
I want it on my kid's phone so I can monitor it.
You know what, we will get you hooked up, we will see you there.
So there is that parent concept you said.
Yeah.
Have the ability to...
And, and honestly, I wish Mindy was here, we, we've talked to several parents, and they're like, wait a minute, my kid presents at home, but they're fine. Well, here's a great opportunity to have, what are you presenting, what are you actually doing, and really, what can we do to help? You know, is it help at home you need, is it help at school you need, is it, what resources can we provide? So again, it's a very inobtrusive way to go in and figure out what's going on with the kid, hold that position, hold your position.
So do we have a policy as to when we actually contact a parent on this?
So if, if, yes, we actually do, so if a student ever enters into suicidal ideation, makes a threat, or is the target of a threat, we will always make those, and that's already qualified in policy, so, it actually pairs very nicely, when X occurs, we respond with Y, so those policies are in place.
I'm sure everybody knows here too, that students that have some of these problems aren't all from difficult circumstances or difficult families. Sometimes when you hear about students that have had problems, they're from good families, with good support and good, um, support systems to help them, and it's a surprise to me sometimes where these kids come from, so I think it's a valuable tool for all of our students.
Dave, I appreciate what you just said there, I'm a co-founder of a suicide prevention platform, the student that prompted this, straight A student, that's multimillionaire, got every box checked. Man, we should have this tool to figure out what was going on with that kid. If we would have had the opportunity to really see what's going on, I firmly believe we would have had the opportunity to intervene, so, on a personal level, it's, it's both melancholy and exciting to see these tools, I get so excited that these exist, and at the same time, I, I reflect back and think, we could have done a better job if kids had been at these schools. So, I'm very excited that we have them, I'm also very, very aware that, you know, parents have lost kids because we haven't been able to intervene. In the state of Utah, kids ages ten to twenty-four most likely to die from themselves in any other consequence. So the more options we have to intervene early, the more protected our kids can be, so, I appreciate what you said there, Dave, I really do.
Thank you, we appreciate that. You ready to move on, board? Um, Early Learning Plan, Jaime Labor, Curriculum Director, we'll take that one.
Good evening. I'm not sure if this is the, maybe the third year I brought the Early Learning Plan to the board, it is a requirement that the Early Learning Plan goes in front of the board, you can see in the memo, I did receive pre-approval from the state on the plan, and if you read through the plan, it really outlines what type of curriculum we use in K three, in math and reading, and also, not just the tier one, you like CKL and Ready Math, but what do we do for those students when they're struggling, we call that tier two or tier three. We're set goals, we have three second grade goals, looking at data, that's where we found some of our gaps, and you can see there's, the, overall, we receive about a hundred and twenty thousand from the state, and then we have a matching, well, I guess it exceeds the matching of two, about two hundred and fifty thousand, but this money's really important, it, it helps to fund part of our instructional coaching, helps to fund many reading tutors, instructional aids, and I, and I believe, I think that funds mainly personnel, I don't think we even use any supplies out of that funds, out of those funds. Do you have any questions about the Early Learning Plan?
Where do the funds come from exactly, just a point of clarification for me?
Well, from the state, I don't really know where the funds come from, I know local, like, one of the questions...
Sorry, the matching funds that we put?
I don't know, I remember talking to Randy Upton years ago, and I said, like, how much do we get, what does this matching funds mean? And it says, board, board local levy? I don't know, I just asked him, and the money would show up, so, shoot, I don't know.
Yeah, let me clarify, I talked to Kim about this, 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 well, I think it was early this afternoon, and, and so, part of our, the, the board certified tax rate, that's, that's the amount, right, that dictates the amount of money that the, the levy is, right, from property tax. So, the, the money, the, the matching money, the board, many years ago, when this program came out, had to, had to approve this, and it's a guarantee that we're going to use that money to match this program, okay? Now, if we didn't do that, tax wouldn't be any different, we could just use that money for whatever, but we, we commit that money to this program, and by doing that, they give us that hundred and, what, what'd you say, one twenty, or whatever it is?
And that fluctuates from year to year, but about a hundred and twenty thousand.
So that, that's how we secure the money from the state, is through that commitment to utilize a portion of, of the local tax for this program. And you know, the, interesting, we'd use it anyway, right, we, we got to teach kids how to read, so.
Yeah, I would just go to business department and say, just how much money can you give me, and it would show up, and I wouldn't question it, so, we're good.
So just think of it coming from our general fund, that's, that's where it comes from.
I just saw that board local levy, and it sounds like a scary word, like, wait, what?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that I understood, thank you.
Other questions, board members? Robin's thinking hard.
No, I'm, I'm, I can, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You in a school district tree, Dr. Leece?
I'm going to vivy my presentation, can you switch it over for me? So, this was in your board packets, the slideshow that I'm going to go through with you. But I'm going to pass out a couple of things too, along the way. If you'll remember back a year ago or so, we brought the TREE Teacher Evaluation Program to you and asked for you to make a motion for us to approve piloting this in three of our schools, which we did this past school year. So, I'm just going to bring you up to speed with how that pilot went, and then what, what we need from you moving forward. So, this is just a reminder, TREE is a comprehensive system aligned to the Utah Effective Teaching Standards, which were slightly amended last week at the state board meeting. And I remember when I was a principal, when we were doing teacher evaluation, so many things were operating in silos, so we had our PGP's, or our Professional Growth Plans, and as administrators, you were tracking those, and who was turning them in, and what was happening with those, then we had our stakeholder surveys, and those were kind of operating in a silo, and you were making sure that teachers got that data, and you were tracking whether they were responding to that, then we had J-PASS, which was the actual observations that we were conducting in the classroom, and you were keeping track of those and timelines for those, so all these pieces were kind of acting in silos, and what we've done with, with our evaluation system is just bring it all together in an effort for teachers to improve, and for our coaches and our administrators to be supportive in helping our teachers improve as educators and improve instruction in the classroom. So, these, these are, this is the acronym for TREE, TEACH, we're looking at teaching, REFLECT, we want our educators to be reflecting on the data that they're seeing, EVALUATE, so it is our evaluation plan, and EXTEND, so we want teachers to extend their learning and be able to change their goals as they move along and become better. We want to shift, and this... We wanna shift, and this is happening at the state level too, is shifting teacher evaluation from a punitive and a got you system to improving teaching and learning in the classroom. So the purpose for our evaluator, evaluation system is to communicate expectations of evidence-based instructional and professional practices. So everything we've designed is based on best practices. It's based on research, what's best in the classroom. We wanna give timely feedback and actionable feedback to our educators. In our previous system, they, a career educator only received feedback on their classroom instruction every other year. Our provisional teachers would get four thirty-minute observations annually. And...
A minimum of.
A minimum. No, in our old system, it was just for maximum. But our new system, you'll see that we wanna be able to give them the ongoing feedback and on the things that they are working on improving. So the outcomes are to ensure that all students have access to and are learning the essential core standards at high levels. So you'll see in a minute how we've tied our classroom observations to making sure that our teachers are delivering a guaranteed and viable curriculum in every classroom to every student. And then we wanna support our teachers with frequent, ongoing feedback based on their performance related to the Utah Effective Teaching Standards. Now, the, the current legislation says that evaluation systems must be tied to the Utah Effective Teaching Standards. That was very loose in our previous evaluation system. In fact, you could get through that whole system without ever even looking at the, at the Uets is what it's short for. But in our new evaluation system, they're going to be doing, well, they did in the pilot, and they, they do a self-assessment with, using those teaching standards. And they self-assess where they're at with each of those standards. And then they set some goals based on those standards. And then the third outcome is that, to ensure that teachers are engaged in continuous professional development through goal-setting and reflective practice. So this is our one sheet. This was in the board packet, but I'll give you a, will you pass these on?
I'll give you a paper copy because I like paper copies and it's just nice to be able to look at it.
They're on the edge of their seats. They love this, just so you know. So this, the one sheet is a concise summary of the comprehensive plan, okay? So we just went through the outcomes at the top. That middle color-coded box shows you the various components of the plan. And then they're defined down below. Okay? So I already spoke to the Uets self-assessment that the teachers complete. Then they set goals and review those throughout the year. The current legislation and Board rule requires every educator to have a professional growth plan. So our educators set their goal in their professional growth plan based on that self-assessment with the guidance of administrators. And then you see the orange is the stakeholder survey. So we give that, we're proposing, we've been, well, we'll, we give that at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. And teachers can look at that survey and then they can complete a reflection. The middle one is observation and instructional feedback. Sorry, are you gonna be my passer outer? I am gonna pass this one out. This is the actual observation tool that our educator, that our administrators and our coaches will use when they walk into a classroom. So these are the various research-based instructional practices that we are inspecting when we walk into a classroom. And during the pilot this past year, I'll talk about the pilot here in a minute. But during the pilot this past year, this form was fine-tuned. I went to many classrooms and did it. Our administrators that were in the pilot practiced it. The superintendent was very familiar and engaged with this tool. So this is the actual tool that we'll be using when we walk into a classroom. That's the middle piece. The planning, evidence of instructional design back on the one sheet. That's where we're asking our educators to make sure that they know where they can access their curriculum map. And so that we know that they know that, that they have a curriculum map and that they're following that. The green on the right-hand side, these are data, data analysis protocols, so.
Ms. Dillon, sorry to interrupt. Before you go on, I think this is important. So if you look at the form, across the top, you see five areas, right? Evidence of GVC, which is guaranteed viable curriculum, clear expectations for student learning, instruction, instructional and engagement strategies for learning, checks for understanding and academic feedback kind of roll into one, which is important. But what you're seeing there is our instructional framework. So everything we're doing this year on a six-week cycle is teaching this, reinforcing it, monitoring it. It's, it's, all of our PD is going to be tightly connected to those headings that you see there. All of those have a strong research base. And we have a document that actually shows the, the effect size and answers the why. Like, why are these things important? It's, it's all through Hattie's research. So this is, it's, I just wanted you to be aware that this is more than just a form. It's a, it's a framework for effective teaching.
Yeah, and I'll add that there's, there's a document that accompanies this that is very explicit on what, what each of these things looks like and what the target, instructional target is when we walk into a classroom, what we're wanting to see. If, what we're gonna ask you to do tonight, so I'll just speak to this now, since this kind of ties to this. We're gonna ask you to approve piloting this in all of our schools this coming school year. And as we roll it out this school year, we'll be giving professional development on each of these items. So we'll be delivering that to our principals so that they're clear on that. And then they'll take it back to their teachers at their buildings. So as we roll out through the pilot, halfway through the year, they'll have received specific professional development on each of these instructional strategies. Okay, back to the one sheet. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Can I ask real quick, sorry?
Sure.
So is this what the teacher gets back?
Yes, so the teacher receives a copy of this back.
Conversation as well?
Uh huh, yes. So I, I think we'll get to that here in just a minute. Here, okay. So the green, back, back to the one sheet. The green, these are data analysis protocols. So we ask teachers to submit six during first trimester, six during second trimester, and four during third trimester. So that may seem like a lot, but keep in mind that there's twelve weeks in a trimester. And our teachers are meeting as professional learning communities or in data meetings weekly. And so we've, in the pilot, they just made that part of the process on their agenda. They, they're looking at data right there in that meeting. And then they're submitting that data protocol just right there on the spot. So it, it may sound like a lot and cumbersome for them to have six at the end of the tri, but they're already done. They're already doing those as they work through the trimester as they're looking at data. So that kind of gives you an overview of the evaluation system. Remember, last year, we piloted this at Naples, Mazer, and the high school. We did training at the beginning of each school year at those three schools. I was in attendance at all three of those. It was delivered consistently by each of those principals. We had ninety-five participant respondents. I'm gonna show you some survey data that we, we gathered at the end of the year from those teachers who participated. We did an analysis of that data in June with, we invited all of our principals to come and participate in a roundtable discussion where we looked at this data together. We got their feedback and made a few changes for the pilot for this coming year. So as we surveyed the teachers who participated in the pilot, again, we had ninety-five responses. We asked them on a scale of one to ten to rate their agreement with the following statements. So this one is, "The TREE Evaluation System has increased my familiarity with the Utah Effective Teaching Standards." So you can see how they responded to that question. And remember, these are provisional teachers, all the way through career teachers who responded to this. On a scale of one to ten, rate your agreement with the following question. "The TREE Evaluation System helps me to set meaningful goals." So we, as part of our, part of the process, they set a SMART goal based on those Effective Teaching Standards. And then they review that goal as they look at data throughout the year. On a scale of one to ten, "Did the TREE Evaluation System provide me with feedback that improves my practices as an educator?" I think this one's pretty significant for me because that's really, that's really the meat of it, is providing feedback to our educators. Where before, they were getting very little and random and pretty inconsistent from building to building. "The TREE Evaluation System helps me to reflect on my teaching practices." So it's an ongoing, comprehensive, comprehensive systematic process where they, anytime, most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, when an administrator walks in their room, they're gonna give them something that they can think about when it comes to what they saw. "I'm a better teacher today because of my participation in the TREE Evaluation System." So we just asked a binary question, yes or no. Eighty-four percent of those who participated said yes. They were a better teacher because they participated in this system. So this, this slide's just walking you through the implementation plan. So again, we piloted three schools. We did that June Fishbowl or Roundtable where we analyzed the data. On August fourth, at our first principals' meeting, we did a, no, that was the Friday after, sorry. We did a in-depth training with our administrators on TREE. We have a timeline and, and several other documents to help our administrators. They will be training, assuming the pilot is approved. They will be training their teachers before the end of August. So we're asking tonight that the Board approve a pilot in all of our schools. Just to update you on where things are at with the State Board. I've been a little distracted tonight because I was trying to dig a little and I was having to watch the meeting in closed caption that happened last week because there was not a lot there yet and the minutes aren't there yet. So anyway, I'm on the State Committee that's proposing the new State Board rule. And what they took to the Board last week, they actually sent it back to committee for some clarifications. One of the biggest controversies that's holding up the State Board rule approval is just how much oversight the state should have and how much should be given to LEAs. Right now, there's a rating system. We're required to report at the end of every school year a teacher effectiveness rating. And there's some unrest about that and what that should look like. Whether it should be a number rating of a one through four, or if it should be a yes, no, they're effective or they're not effective. So it looks like that they didn't even set really a timeline of when they're asking the committee to bring it back. But the, the State Board rule will likely be approved at some point this year. We would be operating outside of policy in this pilot only in the fact that we would not use J-PASS as our evaluation tool. Everything else we're doing is in alignment with legislation and State Board rule. You know, if, if the State Board rule passes, if anything, we could back off a little bit and not do our career educators as often or something like that. There, they may get rid of the PGP or they may require less of stakeholders. They may adjust those things. But what we're doing is very much in line with the direction that the state is moving. And after the State Board rule is approved, then we would bring back our policy to you and make sure that our policy was in alignment with State Board rule. So that's a lot. Do you have questions? Do you wanna hear from the pilot principals?
So. President, are you good?
Yep.
So. We've implemented this in three schools. Did we, did you mention a cost and I missed it? What is the cost to do this?
So the only cost is moving to a new platform called Observer Tab. So during the pilot, we used Canvas where teachers would submit everything and our administrators would submit things. Canvas is not really built for, it's not really designed for this. Observer Tab is a teacher evaluation platform that we plan to move to. The, the cost to move to Observer Tab for all of our evaluations, including our classified employees, is the same cost as what our current classified evaluation system is, is costing us right now. So there really wouldn't be an additional cost. In fact, there would be a little bit of savings because we wouldn't have to pay for J-PASS materials. We're also paying for the J-PASS reader. It's a bubble. We use a bubble tool for J-PASS. So we would have a little bit of cost savings, not super significant, but there would be a little cost savings with that. So there's not really an additional cost if we move to this, this new platform, which...
With the exception of the State Board doesn't approve this, correct?
Yeah.
And we would have to have both?
No, not necessarily.
Just a portion.
Yeah, I, we could move forward with changing our policy right now because there is new, I mean, they're on draft three at the State Board level. So something's going to pass through. It's just a little premature to change our policy if we don't know exactly what they're doing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so are other school districts using this already as well then?
So I know Provo District is using Observer Tab and they're doing some things that are very similar to ours. Actually, they're moving to it this coming year. They're actually doing the same, a self-evaluation using the Uets. There are multiple districts who have reached out to us because they wanna steal our stuff because they know the state's moving in this direction. But there are some uniqueness, there is some uniqueness to ours. And there is a lot in the new State Board proposed rule. There is a lot more latitude for LEAs to define certain things. So there, the State Board rule is looking at educator improvement or educator growth, right? And student achievement as two things, right?
That was my next question. We've seen student achievement out of this.
Right now, like, they're saying LEAs can decide what student achievement looks like. And so for us, if our educators are doing those data analysis tools, then they're looking at student achievement. They're looking at their instructional practices and, and the impact on student achievement. Legislation does not allow us to use summative assessments or student grades as part of a teacher evaluation. But we can look at formative assessments and how kids are performing and how our instructional practices are impacting student performance in our classrooms.
That's interesting. So, so we've talked a lot about coaches and I'm just always curious, who evaluates the coach?
Our instructional coaches? Are you talking athletic coaches?
Instructional coaches.
Instructional coaches?
You're, yeah, we're, we're looking at the teacher, or the teachers, what about the?
Right, so.
The coaches to know if they're doing their job.
Jaime's, the instructional coaches are under Jaime's discretion. And we have a different tool that we use for administrators and support staff, including instructional coaches. We use a different evaluation tool and process for those employees.
Great, yeah, they, they just seem key to a lot of the success of this program.
We actually are planning, assuming we move forward... We actually are planning, assuming we move forward at this, we will be training our coaches on this evaluation plan and they will be doing, using the same tool as they give feedback to teachers. Right now, we're kind of using two different tools. So, the language is different and they may be setting a goal with their coach that isn't in alignment with what their administrator is saying. So, the idea is that they're getting the same type of feedback, using the same language from, from everyone who walks through their classroom.
So did that decrease or increase principal time to evaluate?
I can let them speak to it, but I can tell you one thing that it did. I don't know necessarily about time, but it, it will force our administrators to be familiar with and focus their time on instruction.
Great, thank you for your time. I've asked enough questions.
Time, do you want to speak to time?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Kristi, come on, come on up to the mic, please. In comparison to the other system you're using, did this create an additional time for you as an administrator? Or did it decrease it?
For me, this is the primary work of a principal, right? So, when we talk about, does it take more time? You bet it takes more time and it should because our primary focus should be improving instruction in the, in the teaching capacity of our teachers, right? But it's awesome because it gives us more flexibility. I think you remember from my presentation, we did over two hundred teacher observations. And the cool part of that is teachers are thirsty to grow. They want, they want feedback. They want to improve. And so, administrators spending more time in classrooms doing observations, observations is gonna be related to, obviously, there's a direct correlation to student growth. And we saw that. And, and we believe that this is one of the factors that improved it. So, does it take more time? Yes, but that is time where we should be spending more time.
Great point, thank you.
Does that answer?
I would also say that the conversations are more, are more meaningful. And J-PASS was very stifling because it had very strict timelines that you had to follow. And the timelines are much more flexible. It allows you to go in when needed and as needed and more often in this, in this new system. So you can give, you know, differentiated levels of support based on what each educator needs. I mean, there is a minimum that everybody's gonna get. But if you find someone who's struggling with something and they, they want you to come in every week and just give them feedback on this one thing, you certainly could do that under this system.
Great, thank you.
Board members, anything else? Dr. Leece, according to the data that you've gathered, I'm very excited for a new program to be ranking that high with the, with the teachers. Thanks for that. My other comment would be, as you serve on that board with the state, leave all the control that you can with the local district.
I agree, I was gonna say that.
I'm already there, yep.
And so, they, we don't want them holding us back.
Right.
And so, they, thanks for all of your hard work on that. We get through from ten. Thank you, Dr. Leece.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We're getting a little bit behind, so we're gonna move right along. Curriculum Material Review Committee, HIMI Labor, our curriculum director.
Okay, so this is the annual, really approval of the Human Security Committee, but it's really officially called the Curriculum Materials Committee. As you can see, there are, there are a few names there from the nurses and the health teachers. My name is as well. But there aren't names for the community council leads. We'll have to wait until the community councils vote on who the presidents are, who the, not the presidents, but the, the chair. So, once we have this committee approved, I'll set up a meeting. We'll meet, we'll talk about curriculum. If there's any guest speakers, it has to be approved by that committee. Questions?
Board members, any questions for HIMI?
I just love that you're involving the community council chairs and his parents.
It does make it a little tough where we have specific names. I mean, we, we should involve somebody from the community council, but when we have to wait for a specific name, it slows the process down, so it is what it is.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, HIMI. Dr. Leece, twenty-three, twenty-four, correct salary schedules? Yeah, you two stay, you two stay close.
All right, so you have a memo in your packet with seven salary schedules that we are bringing back to you for revisions. I can walk, the memo walks you through those, but I'm happy to do that as well. So, on the certified instructional salary schedule, this is our teacher salary schedule. The base didn't change. So, when we plug that base into the various formulas, that's where most of the errors came in. On, on the, on all this, most of the schedules that you're seeing tonight. So it's a calculation error. We haven't paid on these schedules yet. So, in the memo, you notice that there, I didn't list a fiscal impact necessarily because we haven't paid on these schedules yet, okay? The voucher pay schedule, same thing because it's calculated based on the base pay. Those were, those were in error. On the teaching assistant salary schedule, same thing. If you have the color copies, the orange shows you where the miscalculations occurred. On the related services schedule, so this is a new schedule where we've, we've, in the past, we've paid like counselors and, on, on the teacher salary schedule. So we have a new salary schedule that educator salary, the eighty-four hundred dollars. Some people get that, some do not. It depends on your assignment. So this schedule allows us to put people here that get that or don't get that and allows us, if you see the different levels, level one is for those who do not have a degree. So sometimes we'll hire an intern. So, level one, and then once they have their degree and license or licensure, then they move to level two, okay? We inadvertently left off our certified occupational therapist assistant and certified physical therapist assistant, so we needed to add those to this schedule. On the related services professional schedule, we didn't even have a voucher pay rate there. We didn't realize we had a part-time speech-language pathologist, so we needed to add that. Then the last two schedules, the athletic salary schedule and the major minor advisor salary schedule, these two are not published on the, on the web, but we still provide them, obviously, for your information. And of course, they are available for those who are paid on these schedules. On the sanctioned athletic salary schedule, you'll notice that big orange box that contains our ticket takers. We've added some additional assisted positions like game day helpers. And, and we've broke this down a little bit where in years past, we've just had ticket taker. We, the high school analyzed their budget to make sure that what, most of this is paid from entrance fees at the gate. They did an analysis with the budget and feel confident that, that this is in line with their revenue. And then the major minor salary schedule, again, the teacher base is noted there and that was incorrect. That's a long, short rundown. Questions?
Do you understand, board members, what, what's going on?
Mainly clerical tidy up, right?
Yeah, and it was a huge overhaul this year, if you remember, and then the creation of that additional salary schedule. So just mostly clerical error.
So, but during negotiations, though, it was just like this?
Yes.
When we, yeah.
Yeah, they knew what the base would be. We actually, Robin asked me this earlier today, how did we discover this? We actually had a teacher who's paid on that legacy salary schedule noticed. And so, we're grateful for people who look at these because there was a lot of changes this year, so.
Board members, Dr. Leece mentioned this, but the mistakes was found before anything's been paid out. So, everything's square, we're just getting the document straight.
And the budget that you approved is reflective of the correct amounts.
Any questions for Dr. Leece? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
AVAC Improvement Plan, HIMI Labor?
Last time tonight, I promise. This is a new procedure from the state. So any school that's on CSI, the reason CSI you can see stands for, let me read through it, Comprehensive Support and Improvement. Any high school that's below sixty-seven percent for graduation gets on this list. And AVAC's been on that list for a few years. But, once the numbers come out in October, I think they'll be off the list, I believe. They've, they've exceeded those numbers, but they have to crunch all the numbers in somewhere around October. But, they have a specific CSI plan that they work through that has to be approved first here and then at the state level. So this is the first attempt. You have the improvement plan in board docs and you have the memo. Do you have any questions about AVAC's plan?
You understand all this, right, Katie? Okay, good deal. Board members, any questions for HIMI?
So, one quick question. Say you drop back under that percentage. They do put you back on, okay? So, reason to be up there in that plus. Thank you, Andy, for what you do there.
Yes, back on. It takes two years of, of, above sixty-seven percent to get off the list. Two consecutive years.
Thank you, HIMI. Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Information items. Dr. Wilson, Utah HB 420. Gender designation.
Alrighty, so as Title IX Coordinator for our district, one of the requirements that we have is we want to stay in alignment as far as our male and female athletes are concerned. Not to say this is from the Department of Redundancy Department, but we already have to apply by the federal mandate. So this again is just a double check on making sure that we're doing the right things. Very, very thankful and the spreadsheets you see here, you got to understand, Kristi and her team were phenomenal at getting information over to us. What we actually did is we took the spend plan for each one of the sports that was designated, multiplied that by the number of participants to get as accurate a measure as possible for the total number of dollars spent for each program. And so that's what is in our financial system. What came from the number of participants came from UHSAA. The only thing we had to do was multiply. A couple of really cool things that we've done this year with Title IX. One, we've got some new annual Title IX trainings that I know all secondary principals are thrilled about. But what I can say is, the middle schools, the high schools, everybody's really jumped in and started these trainings. To be really honest with our compliance with Title IX, we had to outsource a few roles. We've contracted with Institutional Compliance Solutions, which is a state-sponsored entity that helps with some decision-making. It helps with some of the other roles within Title IX. The districts of our size typically don't have the manpower in order to produce. So we are in compliance with Title IX. The high school's done a phenomenal job in making sure of that. And we have taken additional steps to ensure that we stay as compliant as possible. The most recent step is engaging with ICS in order to make sure all of our website, all of our forums, and then all of our training as we move forward is in the specified order through Title IX.
So, approved was girls' lacrosse. I don't see that on here. Is that a?
So, girls' lacrosse will actually be in next year's data, so it will take one year of running time.
It is, it is a back data, okay? That's what I was questioning, so.
We don't need to get into a lot of detail. Why does girls' sports typically cost more than boys?
That's a good question, I don't know. I don't know. I, I wish I could tell you. I wish I had a, a good reason why or a rationale. I don't.
That's, that's fair. That wasn't really a fair question.
I got two girls, I'd love the answer. You, you find out, let me know.
Any other questions?
Wish you hadn't pointed that out.
Todd's gonna have a question. What's he got?
Maybe the women are more accurate in...
Their calculations. There goes Robin. Okay, we're gonna quit, we're gonna quit with that right there, okay?
There you go, you got your information, have a good day.
I think that's good enough. We have some school reports. First, we're gonna go to Central, Central Cove Preschool, Principal Erin Brown. Is she a principal or coordinator? What's the right terminology?
She's awesome.
Well, she's a coordinator right now.
Okay.
Okay. My tick week has not been a great week, so I've recorded this, so there were a few where all I have to do is push play. And then I'll be here to smile and answer questions that you have, but...
Good evening. At Central Cove, you know our work is child's play. And so, with construction also on my mind for some reason, I wanted to share with you some of the key building blocks of our program over the past year and moving into the next. If you are my kind of micro builder, it's critical to start with a building guide before adding the extras. At Central Cove, our philosophy of meaningful playful engagement sets the tone for all we do. We play with purpose and kindness as we learn with friends and family so our students will be successful learners in kindergarten and continue building meaningful relationships with the important people in their lives. The base block of our work and playing is our building. It has continued to serve us well as this year we have tackled challenges of age accumulation and ambiguity, although you may begin to sense a theme throughout the presentation tonight. Rich with history and nostalgia, the building is still definitely past its prime. It's solid history and has some really great fireplaces, but it's tired and ready to retire, as is evidenced by its plumbing, electrical, and heating quirks. We are definitely looking forward to our new building. Over the past year, we've encountered accumulation of the good, the bad, and the ugly. The accumulation of books in our book swap has helped us continue to promote family literacy and students are excited to choose their own book to take home and read with their families. Feel free to come by and grab or share a new favorite. There was, of course, the mixed blessing of tremendous snow accumulation and the rooftop to sidewalk to parking lot, maintenance kept us clear and safe throughout. In addition to the sometimes seemingly endless snow, we also began tackling the daunting accumulation that is the basement. It may not look impressive here, and I wish I had taken before pictures, but we made a significant dent and have a strategy for continuing filtering as we prepare for our move to our new building. Whether it's the age of the building or run-ins with our playful friend Baxter, our encounters with the unexpected bring us together with laughter, ridiculous speculation, and detective work. From closets running to wandering about loops, the roof to doors opening to doorbells ringing, the shared stories will last long beyond our time in the building. Our only question is if his brains will follow us to the new dollar. Of course, our play would have no purpose without relationships and engagement. We have strategically worked to engage staff, students, and families in the collective work of building successful preschoolers. We have truly appreciated the contribution of an additional SLP and OT, a fabulous new secretary, and a new district partner within the past year. Together, we work collectively to cultivate a complementary balance of direct instruction, purposeful play, and rich content to engage staff and students in meaningful learning. Our unique KLI curriculum has helped us learn hands-on, experiential, playful learning and more rigorous expectations, and our students have risen to the challenge. In addition, this year, we invited some district celebrities to come and read to us and have a favor with our students. If any of you would like this, I have what we know and I can get you the details. There are no more critical relationships or influential relationships in our students' lives than those within the walls of their own homes. We know that partnering with family will strengthen... We know that partnering with family will strengthen student support, build greater student success. This year, that partnership effort included a new parent orientation in addition to our back-to-school open house. It also included our family and pre-K Friday activities, and our first preschool graduation celebration. Our favorite, however, was the first annual Central Cove Polar Express Family Liberty Night. Here, families travel from stop to stop, each activity integrating multiple developmental skill areas centered around the classic children's book. The final stop, a visit with a multi-language world traveling guest, was the highlight of the evening. For many, this was the most memorable, magical moment of our entire year. This coming school year holds many more exciting opportunities as we continue to grow toward our new building. We are thrilled to be operating in eight classrooms rather than our previous six as we launch a new AAC classroom and a new foundations classroom. The AAC class will focus specifically on helping students communicate using alternative and authentic forms of communication, while the foundations programs for our incoming three-year-olds will be a playgroup-based program with a parent participation component, helping bridge the transition from home-based early intervention services to school-based services for both students and families. Building off our existing celebrity readers, we will also be adding mystery readers to our list of classroom visitors, and we'll be adding additional literacy and reading engagement opportunities in attendance as well. Our schedule will also be expanding to include marvelous Mondays that will complement our family Fridays in adding tailored instruction opportunities for our students. As we continue the exciting path toward our new building, we want to thank all of you for your continued support and collaboration. We are stronger because of you, and our students and families are the beneficiary. As Helen Keller said, "Alone we can do so little, together we can do so much." Thank you for being part of our we care.
Is there anything I can... That's not...
She turned that way down.
That one went way down. Is there anything I can answer for you?
Board member?
Did they get your plumbing problem cleaned up?
Yes, mostly. We're still working on some ceiling work, but yep. And we caught it earlier this year than last, so it doesn't smell as bad. It's looking good.
So a number... They've just, just talk loud, they've got it turned down.
So a number of you here today didn't realize there is a ghost in this room?
Oh yes, haunted bathrooms and everything. He bothers us more as we get ready to leave, I think. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ashley Valley Education, AVEC, Andrea McKee.
Awesome. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to present our school. It's, I enjoy talking about AVEC. I call it the best school in the world, 'cause I enjoy it there. And I think everyone who lives and breathes in that school enjoys it as much as I do, I hope. So, anyway, with that, I wanna share a little bit about data. Board members and directors, you guys heard this at graduation, so just a little bit about our school. We have twenty-six staff members. That includes everyone that's employed by UNO School District in our building. That includes our custodian. We service one hundred, one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine students. If you count summer school, add three hundred to that number, and that's how many students we serviced this last school year, including summer school. We have fifty-one adult education graduates this last school year. We had a hundred and six AVEC high school graduates. And if you combine those two numbers together, we had a hundred and fifty-seven total graduates. Those are the same numbers that you heard during graduation, with a couple more, because Adult Ed graduated a couple in the month of June, and the high school graduated two more in the month of June. So, very similar data to what you heard at graduation. Our strategic plan, I wanna share a little bit of information about that. Our mission is we all learn because it's worth it. We like using the term "we" because we believe that the staff is included with the students. And so, we, all of us at the school, learn because it's worth it. And our vision, we all learn and grow together for a successful future. Again, the "we," we want to learn and grow together. I feel that AVEC has miracles that happen every day. And these students come to us in a struggling state, in difficult circumstances, and we are learning and growing together to help them be successful in their future, to give them the confidence to move on with life, to give them the skills and the abilities to move on with life. And it really is, our vision is to create that successful future for our students. Our purpose at AVEC is to help students complete classes and gain the confidence, mindset, and skills to graduate. We want them to gain that confidence that can move them into the workforce, move them into college and career, move them into opportunities that can propel them forward. And our graduation is what's most important. Everything builds around that graduation rate, everything builds around that purpose of graduation. Our theme this year, every year we choose a different theme, and this year it's full sand. So, with that, what does it mean? I'm sure someone out here knows what it means.
Full sand, baby.
Full sand, it's giving it your all, it's doing it with... I mean, I teased it, it's gonna be us running around the school with our hair on fire. But that's not it. That's not, that's not the only thing. It is giving it our all, it's doing everything that we can to be successful. But, I have a video here to share with you guys. I'm gonna have to change, I think, the display to get it to play. Hopefully it doesn't blast you out. Alright, I think you guys get the point. You get the point that full sand or send it is our focus this year. And the nice thing about this focus is, it's not just about running around in the school with our hair on fire, but if you notice, a lot of those video clips are very purposeful and very intentional. When we send it, we are sending it with our PLCs, we're sending it with our data, we're sending it with everything that we have in our structures at AVEC to make it a great school year. And we're giving it all to our students, we're giving it all to our staff and to our community. We are a community school in a lot of ways, with our Adult Ed, with our Youth and Care, with our Alternative School, and our online school. And so, we wanna give it all to our community, and we hope to send it this year. So our attribute focus this year is to be an influencer. We want to influence the students that we're serving, and we want to do everything that we can to influence them for good. You guys heard this Warrior Creed at graduation. This Warrior Creed was written fifteen years ago. So maybe fourteen years ago by one of our teachers, Shane Lance. And the Warrior Creed is something that we have lived by for fourteen years, and I'd like to share this with you tonight. The warrior steps onto the battlefield of life armed only with knowledge and pride. The warrior will be standing, will be valiantly standing when others have withered and died. When surrounded by the trials of life, the warrior looks fear in the eye, knowing no matter how awful it gets, this too shall pass the warrior by. The warrior trained hard and learned much in the walls of a warrior school, guided by warrior trainers and lived by the warrior rules. These next three paragraphs are our school rules. Respect for yourself is the first rule, that's part of the warrior's creed. The warrior continually shows this respect, not only in word, but in deed. Respect for others is another. For one thing, the warrior knows that it's through the strength of others that the warrior's own power grows. Respect for property is the final rule, lived by the warrior with pride. Knowing how you treat your surroundings is a reflection of what is inside. The warrior stands out from the others on this battlefield we all call life. It's easy to tell one who walks, talks, and acts with nothing but warrior pride. This is a creed that we've lived by, as I mentioned, for about fourteen years. We are honored to be warriors. We walk our school with pride, and we do everything that we can to pass those same things on to our students that we serve. So I wanna thank you for the opportunity to serve at AVEC, the opportunity to see miracles in our daily lives at AVEC. It's the best school in the world, and we're honored to serve there. Thank you very much.
Andy, I got one question for you. I hope this is still in your memory bank. How many students graduated from UNO High School that attended at least one from your school? Do you remember?
It was fifty-two point something percent, yeah. I don't remember the exact numbers. I can pull it though.
It's okay. My point just being, I wanted the public to know what an impact that little building had on the UNO Basin. Thanks, thanks to you and Erin Brown, we appreciate your presentation.
President, I know we're about out of time, but how do you get your, one quick question. How do you get your statistics or your numbers on graduation? When you have that many students, what is considered a student?
Graduation rate, or just some students that we count?
In order to get the funding, yes. How, to get to the above sixty-nine percent?
That comes from the state, so they take the whole cohort of our senior class, how many of them graduated and how many of them did not. And so, it will come out usually in November is when that final number comes out from the state. And it's, the graduation rate comes from the state.
Alright, so it doesn't come from that student that's a UNO High School student? Came over for one class, doesn't count?
No, UNO High School will have their own graduation rate, and we will have ours. Good question.
Board members, any other questions? Board members, that brings us to the end of our work session. So I would entertain a motion to close the work session.
I'll make a motion to close the work session.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We're gonna take a seven-minute break. We know we're running behind public. We've been sitting here for a little while, so we need just a minute. So we'll take seven. Um, we've been sitting here for a little while, so we need just a minute. So we'll take seven.
So, we pray that we may continue to push ourselves and push those students to excel and exceed in their lives. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to, to be in a building and provisions which thou allows us to have in this life and the goodness and mercies which thou extends to us. We pray that we may be guided in all we do and ask thee for thy guidance this evening in our decisions and our quests. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Let everyone please stand up. Joining the pleasure ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for helping us with that and for the prayer. Um, we're gonna turn the time over to Kate Larson for our school, um, high school report. Um, she's a sto- student board member rep. We'll give her a mic.
Okay, so we haven't officially started school yet, so I don't have a lot to report on, but last night our girls soccer beat Union eight to zero with the mercy rule. Um, this Friday we have a football game against Duchaine and that's at, uh, UNTA, it's a home game. And then we're just starting our back-to-school nights next Tuesday and Wednesday for freshmen slash any new students. And then we just start school in two weeks and we're really excited, so yeah.
Kate, what time does the football game start? Do you know off the top of your head?
Oh, seven maybe? Yeah, like usual. You're good.
Cool.
Yeah, super exciting.
Thanks, we appreciate you being here, giving us a report. Um, we have a celebration tonight and, um, after the celebration, um, some, you're welcome to stay, you're always welcome to stay, but after the celebration, we want some pictures of the McCackney family. And so if Kathleen would go out into the hall, Shawna will meet you out there or someone, um, to get the, to get the pictures. And so to start with, I'm gonna turn the time over to the superintendent and then, um, he can turn it over to who he needs to from there.
Okay, thank you, President. Um, yeah, we, we only have one celebration, but I think it's a, a really important celebration. Um, Ca- Kathleen has, has had a lot to do with our foundation and, and really, um, a lot to do with our school district over the years. I've asked, uh, Robin McClellan to, to read a, a little bio and some information. I don't know if you want to come up front to do that, Robin? Um, that might be good. And then we have a little something for Kathleen. So Kathleen, we'll let you stay seated until she's done and then we'll have you come up, okay?
So I'm, I'm super excited to be able to be a part of this celebration. First of all, um, I just, I was a recipient of the foundation when I was teaching. Um, it was a simple thing. I was in a big gym and I taught, uh, like sixty to seventy social dance students and I needed a, um, body mic. And so I didn't really know, I mean, I'm like, you know, teachers, we always out of our own pocket, but I'm like, how can I get this mic? I, I really would like and I really don't want to pay. I want a nice mic because it's a big sound box. Anyway, um, I went through the foundations and that was my first interaction and I did get my body mic and I used it for years and it was fantastic. And then I used to see Kathleen around at everything, like every award thing and I, I didn't, I just thought she was just civically engaged and involved. But she really, once I got on the board, then I was on the affiliated committee with the school, UNTA Schools Foundation, which I have truly enjoyed. Number one, because I'm not in charge of anything. Number two, because it's a great group of dedicated people and they really care about kids. I mean, it's, it's, it's what it's supposed to be. So, okay, with that little lead in, um, I hope, I, I, I think I need to read the whole bio. So I hope just, and, and all of you that are here, just let's see, how many of your kids, are your kids? Just will you raise your hands that are children of Kathleen and Gail, okay, and then grandchildren? You guys, what a legacy and how proud you should, and, and in-laws, those are, yes, because you're, you're also part of this amazing family, so.
Now Robin asks which ones are outlaws.
Okay, which one of, alright. We always love the black sheep, alright. So Kathleen Argyle McCackney grew up in Spanish Fork, Utah, attended the, uh, college, attended college in Cedar City and graduated from the University of Utah with a BS degree in a five-year program for home economics educators. She also attended the Hennecker Business College, which she used a lot. She helped her husband set up, um, law firms in six different locations when they would move, they changed different locales. And is an accomplished musician in piano and organ and also vocalist. She married Gail McCackney and is the mother of seven children and thirty grandchildren. She also helped raise three nieces and a Navajo Indian daughter. She has supported these children and grandchildren by attending countless sporting events, band concerts, plays, and any activities that they're involved in and still is doing that today. Kathleen values education and in turn got involved and volunteered a, a little over thirty years ago in nineteen ninety-two in the UNTA Schools Foundation. Her name is synonymous with the UNTA Schools Foundation. She has served in many capacities over the thirty years, thirty-one, through good times and bad times and really keeping it afloat and always dedicating time, goods, her own goods, and so much, um, of her knowledge to being a board member, chairperson, and executive secretary. The UNTA Schools Foundation is a charitable 501(c)(3) organization and provides so much for US, UNTA School District and can be seen, and you can see Kathleen at event after event presenting money or goods to our schools, students, and educators. You will also see her biz- her at businesses showing how donations and contributions are tax-deductible gifts that benefit our schools, our kids, and our community. Here are just some of the things that UNTA Schools Foundation with Kathleen and the dedicated, uh, volunteers provide. Scholarship money for graduating seniors, educational goods supplies, tools, and projects to help specifically the classroom teacher and direct- that directly impacts students and improves their, um, educational experience. Educating teachers and spending countless hours on how to apply, qualify for, receive, and document the foundation gifts. Number four, Sterling Scholar Awards through scholarship money. Number five, UNTA Schools Foundation Teachers in Excellence Awards, um, which I know is so appreciated by our hard-working teachers. Number six, Quarters for Christmas Credit Cards for needy students, and I probably missed some other things. According to Dana Durham, who was our current treasurer of the foundation since two thousand and two, when the records went to QuickBooks, the total funds raised by the foundation is one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy-three and twelve cents. So almost one, oh, one point one million, a little over that. So that's amazing. And here's what's super impressive, is more than half of that has gone to, um, our classroom educators. And over one hundred and twenty-five thousand has been awarded to students through scholarships and it's so helpful. Kathleen, in her spare time, has also managed to work as a paralegal and office manager in, in the McCackney Law Firm through all its iterations. Serves on numerous committees, um, at our public schools, including like Sterling Scholar Selection Committees, board member and chair of Ashley Valley Regional Hospital. She served for ten years as the UNTA County Republican Party Secretary. She's been a board member for four years of the Utah Lung Association and has held leadership, many leadership roles, uh, for years in her church. Last fun fact, when Gail, um, Kathleen's husband, served as the lieutenant governor beside Olean Walker as governor, Col- uh, Kathleen was known as Utah's First Lady and Myron Walker was known as Utah's First Lad. I love that. Just a couple of quotes. And Kathleen, come on up here now, because I'm almost finished. Um, Heidi Benyon says she's organized and efficient in all she has done for the students of UNTA School District. Um, she serves with, service with love describes her best. Um, I also got to do a little history lesson and I, I found out that, uh, the foundation was started in nineteen eighty-two. And these are the people that we, Eloise with?
Some of them.
Yeah. Eloise Turner, Dan Turner, Bob Foley, and Phil Ellis was the superintendent, who was very involved with the first articles of es- of establishing the UNTA Schools Foundation. Um, then things kind of faded and in nineteen eighty-seven, Bill Caldwell, um, reestablished those articles. And then Kathleen came on board, literally in nineteen ninety-two and hasn't left. She did her three years. I asked her, well, why did you stay? And she said, well, I did my three years and I felt like the foundation was, uh, just really doing good things for kids. When you catch that vision and help kids of all ages and abilities out, it's very rewarding. Um, and, uh, just want to say what a privilege it is to have worked with you, Kathleen, and you deserve this recognition and we celebrate you tonight.
Oh my goodness.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to get pictures.
Superintendent, we want to shake her hand.
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much.
Oh, is it the hair?
Let's give her one more round. You can take, you can take them all with you. You're welcome. Kate, where are you going? This party ain't over.
We know the score to the soccer game yesterday.
Eight, zero.
Eight to zero. Guess who's the dependent?
Right there, that's.
She's, uh, she's feeling the pain now.
Thank you, guys. Um, we're to item one E, patron input. No items have been received, um, in accordance with board policy. So with that, we'll move to item number two, business and action items. And first up is the consent calendar. Which include the minutes from the June fourteenth, um, work session and business meeting, purchases over fifty thousand in contracts, monthly board financial update, approval of early learning, early learning plan, approval of UNTA School District tree, um, teacher evaluation plan and pilot, approval of curriculum material review committee, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four corrected salary schedule, approval of AVEC improvement plan. Board members, as you know, you can pass all of them at once or segregate them out if you'd like to. At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as outlined.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Denise Maynard, seconds? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Policies for approval on second reading, and we would, we need to do these one at a time. Number one is policy zero zero five point oh six five oh, holidays. Oh, s- holidays first reading. It's second, right? Holidays second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policy zero zero five point zero six five oh, holidays second reading.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Todd Massey, seconds? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Policy zero zero two oh seven two oh, public appearances at board meetings, second reading.
So, um, President Shivers, I didn't catch this during the work session, but if, if everybody would go to, before we make the motion, we need to look at two point three. Where it references other sections, that was based on the old version and it's wrong. So it says, so, um, I think, Grant, do you want to read what, what we're fix?
Yeah, so.
We amend, we need to amend it.
So, uh, basically the amendment would need to say something along these lines. Comments to the board may only be made as recognized and invited by the board president during the meeting. The same guidelines as outlined in sections three point three through three point eight five below for patron input.
The same guidelines as outlined in sections three point three through three point eight five below for patron input on non-agenda items shall apply.
Is it three point eight point five below? Three, three point three through three point eight point five. Says above, so that'd be below.
It should say below, yes.
Okay.
And then, and then it just, rather than for patron input, it's for patron input on non-agenda items because that's the new name of section three point oh.
So does that make sense? Yeah, we just.
Doesn't change any substance, just the cross.
Right, the content's the same, it's just those cross references. Yeah, so I guess whoever makes the motion, we need, if we want to.
Robin, do you have that figured out so you could make that motion?
I'll try. Here we go. Unless anyone has more to discussion.
Grant, you watch us close, make sure we don't pass something that.
Alright. So I move that we pass the pub, uh, policy zero zero two point zero seven two oh, public appearances at public meetings. At board meetings, thank you, with one amendment. I guess, I don't know how many amendments, but amended as to read for two point three would be comments to the board may only be made as recognized and invited by the board president during the meeting. The same guidelines as outlined in sections three point three through three point eight point five. Below for patron items on non-agenda items. That was a little redundant.
Patron input on non.
Patron input on non.
Agenda.
Agenda items. That would be the amendment, just amending the reference numbers instead of two point three, three point three.
Are we okay? Shauna, do you have that? You okay? Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Denise Maynard seconds. Any comments or need of clarification? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Personnel changes. I'll entertain a motion. Do we accept the personnel changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the personnel changes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Tonia seconds. Remember, board members, if you have a question about a specific one, please use a number and not a name.
So tonight, we're presenting twenty-five candidates to fill new hire positions and twenty-five current employees who have recently been assigned. We're growing our own quite well right now. Um, we have six candidates tonight to fill extracurricular, um, positions and for your information, you see thirty-five individuals whose employment has ended or will end on the date indicated. Um, just FYI, we have about fifteen, uh, pending offers that are, that will be acted on in the next week or so and our hiring situation is, we're in really good shape right now, so. Teachers in classrooms, so that's great. Questions for me?
I just need a minute.
I'll make a comment while you, board members are, are looking. Um, I got just a second to visit with Dr. Leese in the hallway as I was passing by and she says, "Much more pleasant this fall than last." We're in much better, much better shape.
That's true. We're retaining really well and hiring within, so it's good. Yeah, so these got to you a little bit late, so take all the time you need. We just wanted to get as many approved as we could tonight.
I have, there's a question on, um, eighteen newly assigned. I mean, number eighteen on the newly assigned. Oh, 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 never mind. I don't, I don't, sorry. I forget that that's the former assignment to the newest.
Yes, correct.
I'm good. It's great.
Um, I'll make a note just on, uh, those three that have a blank, um, new hires, there you see three blanks under the education and training column. Um, those candidates are in, uh, programs, um, they just haven't completed yet, so. Um, in the future, we are going to note the program that they're in there, so, um, for your information.
I'm in no hurry, board members, but you let me know when you're ready and we'll.
Okay, I do have another question. Sorry. What it says, like for one year only, that's their contract, that's what they sign.
Yeah, so, um, those, that's basically, uh, usually because of the funding source, the funding may end, uh, for that hired position. Um, not necessarily because the applicant's not qualified to continue with us, but it's a funding source.
Just funding, one-time source, mhm.
And in some co- in some cases, we may look at a reassignment at the, at the end of that year, especially if they're an effective educator.
On, uh, notification of separation number one, are we eliminating that program for that age group? Or was there just a change in?
No, we'll rehire that position.
Okay, thank you.
Denise, you okay?
Yeah, I think I.
Robin?
Mm-hmm.
Todd already gave me a thumbs up. Tonia?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number three, calendaring items. Superintendent?
President, board members, uh, just as we've been doing, uh, over the last several months, we've, we've invited, we've asked principals to just give us, uh, things that are coming up in their buildings and there's, there's quite a, quite a few things. Uh, back to school nights, um, orientations. Certainly, we don't expect you to be at all of those things, uh, but anything that, that might be interesting to you, that you might want to, uh, to be a part of, you're, you're welcome. You don't, you don't have to call me. If it's on this list, y- you don't have to give any notification. You can, you can just show up. So it's, it's, uh, uh, we, we sure encourage you to, to participate, but certainly don't expect, um, we, we know that you're busy as well and, and there's quite a few things here as, as school begins. So, so with that, the, the one thing I would encourage you to attend would be our opening institute. And, uh, now I gotta find it. It's on here. Twenty-first? Yep. It's on, uh, it's on the twenty-first. Uh, it's, you know, there, there's a benefits fair with that, but if you just come to the first hour, hour and fifteen minutes, that's, that's when we kick off the school year with all of our staff. Um, it, it's a great opportunity to, uh, just to be there to support, support the entire staff. And we will, uh, we always roll out our district kick or the, the priorities and things that are important. Um, we have a, an agenda laid out already and, uh, would, would love to invite you to come. President, that's, that's all I have unless there's questions.
And that's at the Vernal Middle School, right?
Yeah, it's in the auditorium at Vernal Middle School. It's the only place big enough to get everybody.
And our next board meeting is September?
It is.
Thirteenth?
September um, thirteenth and it will be here.
Principals, why we have you here. If there's ever, um, being a board member is a difficult thing to walk sometime. If you ever have need of us or would like us at an event, you're always welcome to ask. Um, sometimes it's hard for us to, um, not to impose or be at, um, someplace where sometimes it's not helpful to have us someplace. Um, and we re- we realize that, but if that, if you ever have need for one of us or would like support from the board, just to be somewhere, why, you, you're always welcome to ask. Um, maybe we can't always do that, but we're, we'll always do our very best. From there, we just pick events. We hit a football game, we hit a soccer game, basketball game. Um, so that's kind of the way we just roll, we just roll along and so they, um, um, with that being said, follow up from the superintendent or board president.
I, I don't have anything.
Okay, um, business administrator, Grant?
Uh, I also don't have anything.
Okay, Denise?
I don't have anything.
Robin?
I just called her chicken.
Chicken?
I just want to acknowledge, uh, Miss Lynn Leese, I went to the, and, and you're involved, the chamber with the first annual education conference for Uwena Basin and it was great. It was, I went, I was gonna be there for ten minutes. I was there for like a whole thing, two hours almost, just talking to all the different educators, but, um, in the, and, and entities that are here to educate our children in the basin, so, um, it was great and, and you did a great job organizing that, so. I think they said there was like a hundred and fifty people came through? Is that with the chamber?
Yeah, we were, we were obviously hoping for more and, but this was the first and we think next year will be that much better. And we appreciate, obviously, the Uwena School District for participating in that.
That's all I have.
Anything else, Todd, for this meeting?
I'm good, thanks.
Tonia?
I'm just excited for the new school year. I have a kindergarten year this year, so.
I am too. I don't know how to say this without it sounding funny, but we're proud of you guys. We've asked a lot of hard things. We know that. We've asked for a lot of changes. Um, you don't become the best school district in Utah by sitting around on your pockets. And it's one thing to ask for that and it's another thing to have a team striving to make that happen. We thank you guys. We appreciate all of your hard work. Um, we got, um, principals here tonight hobbling around on one leg. Um, Dean needs a shot of Bantamin. If you're a cowboy, you know what that means, but they, um, we appre- we appreciate all the hard work and, and all the effort that goes into everything. Um, I don't have anything else. You okay, superintendent?
Yeah, um, thank you for those kind words. Uh, you know, one, one thing that we're really gonna emphasize this year is the importance of positivity in our schools. We really want to flood our, our schools, our classrooms, our hallways, our cafeterias, our commons areas, uh, with, with an abundance of positivity. And that doesn't just mean throwing praise out to kids, but it means establishing a real positive environment and positive relationships with kids. It's so extremely important, probably never been more important than it is this year, but it starts right here. It starts at the top. Um, with, with us modeling that and, and in the way that we treat each other and the way our principals treat their, their, um, their employees and so, uh, I'm looking forward to this year. I think it's gonna be the best year ever for Uwena School District. Uh, I'm, I'm an optimistic, uh, person. I always have been, but, uh, but I think we've got some things that have happened and we have some positive momentum. Um, so I'm really looking forward to, to working with, with this group this year. Never been more excited in my career. I've been doing this for thirty years. And I, I've never been more, um, excited to begin a school year, so. Uh, so, so here we go, right? To buckle up and, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be great. But thank you, President, for your kind words and I sure do appreciate, uh, this board and, and the support that you provide for our staff.
Thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close the, uh, board meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.